Is called. And Brian or Steve, can you do a roll call, please?
Sure. Uh Ms. Tabachnik?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Present.
Mr. Bryce?
Present.
Ms. Lankowski?
Here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
And Ms. Wells?
Here.
You left me out.
Oh, Mr. Scholman.
I'm here.
Oh, no. Okay. Well, we will start our agenda. The first matter is twenty twenty one dash oh three SPR. Seven sixty one Main Avenue. I Park Extension of Time Request. For four story one hundred thirty two unit. Multi-family dwelling. An existing mixed use development site. Uh, is anybody here representing this? Or presenting seven sixty one Main Avenue?
Good evening. My name is Lauren Calabria and I'm here to represent the request.
Good. Proceed.
Okay, um, thank you, everyone for your time this evening. Um, we'll hopefully make this brief as I know you have other items on your agenda. Um, so the request is for the extension of the approval for the one hundred and thirty two unit multi-family building. On the Norwalk northern portion of the I Park Norwalk, which is located at seven sixty one Main Avenue. Um, the reason that we are coming before the board with the request. Is that um, the parking garage, which is being constructed. On the Wilton portion of the property between the LA Fitness Building. And the warehouse building at the back of the site along the railroad. Um, we it took a bit longer than anticipated um, due to some delays with. Receiving elevator and electrical equipment. Um, the garage is near completion at this point. We're just awaiting inspections. Uh, and we anticipate that that will be done by the end of this month. Um, that will practically allow construction to occur on the northern portion of the site, the multifamily building. So that we can put the parking that's being displaced into that parking garage. Um, the second reason for the request is that sadly. In last October um, of twenty twenty four, uh, we did lose one of the founders of the I Park, um, Joseph Carter. And he did handle um. The majority of the construction headed it. We did have many other members on our team. Um, but that's just caused a little bit of. Uh, reconfiguration internally. Um, but with all that said, we are, you know, near completion on the parking structure. And ready to see this um. This multifamily building go forward.
And does anybody have any questions?
I had a question. Uh, unless I'm mistaken, and I haven't looked at this in a couple of days. But it looked to me as if you were asking for a multi-year. Extension typically we give a one-year extension. And if that is not sufficient, then the applicant comes back and asks for another year. We're usually pretty. Liberal when it comes to uh, awarding these uh, extensions. Uh, when when there's a good reason for it.
Um, yeah, we had asked for a two-year extension, I believe, under the current um, approval. Which is good through um, next July. Um. That it would just give us, you know, typically these projects take about eighteen to twenty-four months. So, you know, it. That we do have that one-year period right now, but for the project to be complete within two years is a little tight. So that's why we've asked for the two-year extension.
Well, Galen, I I would be happy to um, make a motion to approve a one-year extension. Um. And if if needed, um, I Park um, is certainly able to come back and ask for a second. Uh, extension as as the other members of the commission know. Um, we've awarded three even four. Uh, years in a row when uh, there's good reason.
It's good to have them coming back. Is there a second to that motion? Two?
A second.
One-year extension? Okay. All right, uh, Steve, could could you do a roll call? Oh, we should speak Diana for this one.
Sure. Um. Mr. Scholman?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Oh.
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Okay.
And a yes for Darius as well.
Oh.
And I did review the the application.
Sorry, Darius. I did not see you pop up. There you are.
Better question, Darius. Did you get iced coffee for everyone?
No, but I do have a sent you.
Okay.
Thank you, commissioners, for your time and have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to the next matter before. It's twenty twenty five dash sixty five cam. Joseph R. Kugno. Five Gregory Court. Construction of a new single-family residence. To be a flood compliant. With an inf- infertile garage of stormwater management. Uh, who is here representing? By Gregory Court.
I'm here this evening. I'm Joe Kugno. I'm the architect for the Newums uh, from Kugno Architecture in Wilton.
Wonderful. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Uh, tonight I come before you, we're proposing for removal of a. Existing one and a half-story residence that's on the west side of Gregory Court that's on the water. And replacing it with a new structure of approximately thirty-five hundred square feet. The new building will be no closer to the water than the current one is. It'll be raised up to the proper flood elevation, which is noted on the attached plans. We're also gonna be uh, adhering to any of the comments. That were issued by zoning on August nineteenth, which we've updated plans. And I believe we're also forwarded to you regarding some questions that zoning had asked.
Okay. Um. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, uh, one question for you. I I believe one of the things that staff had raised was um, having a planted buffer along the water. Is that something that's incorporated in the plans?
Yes, you know, that's a great question. That was something I did want to ask. There currently is a terrace that's remaining that's at the back of the the residence. There's approximately between six and eight feet between the terrace and the seawall. And it's it's a grass area. To the sides, there is large trees that pretty much line the property in large bushes. So the only grass that literally is in the backyard is that little six to eight-foot strip that's there. I didn't know if we needed to still plant that. Or if the grass was a sufficient buffer. So I left it honestly as it was per plan.
Do you mind pulling up that plan if you have that?
Yes, yep, I will share my screen.
Uh, Amelia, while he's doing that, uh, can you comment on that?
If you could see it, just tell me. I've got it right here.
Yes, we can see it. Thank you.
Sure. So that is the only outstanding comment that uh, we had as staff. Otherwise, the uh, survey was revised survey was received a few hours ago and the revised site plan was received this morning. Which addressed all my staff comments. Yeah, and the only. Outstanding item was that buffer out there, which, as you know, is a consistent condition of your approvals to aid in stormwater filtration. And having it right along the seawall is more beneficial than having it along the sides of the property lines. And the original site plan did propose a buffer in that area. So I had initially just asked what plantings would be there. And then. There I there may have been a miscommunication between the engineering firm who created the site plan and the. Homeowners, but I did like that original buffer that was on that site plan.
And again, we're open to doing that. I guess my question was, was the grass sufficient with all the plantings that are already existing? Or do we need to propose something which we can do as an alternate also?
Amelia?
A staff would definitely prefer to see a an alternate proposal that had uh. Any plantings really in that lawn area directly along the seawall. It is ultimately up to the commission, but. It would be preferable to have something more than lawn directly against the seawall.
And and as I said, that's fine with us and we can make it if it's if it's acceptable by the commission, we can make that a contingency to. To approve it and we're fine with it.
Thank you. How wide was that um, buffer in the initial proposal? Is that something you have handy?
I I unfortunately, I don't.
Okay. Amelia, is that something you're comfortable working with applicant on on how wide that buffer should be?
Yes, absolutely. I think the original proposal, which is um, what's on the website, is did have it. Between the patio and the seawall, but I understand that, you know, the homeowners would like lawn. So I don't think it needs to be the entirety of that lawn space, but just getting a few more plantings in there for stormwater filtration purposes, I think would benefit the uh, the harbor.
Certainly, and we can work with staff on determining what that is.
Sure. Thank you.
Good. Uh, well, let's uh, speak. Anna on this matter? And is there a motion to approve?
This is shaping all move to approve. Sorry, Anna.
Okay, is there a second? Somebody second? Lou second? Okay. Good, Amelia, do you have a? Can you pull up the proposal, the uh, resolution?
So like I mentioned earlier, there is a revised site plan and uh, survey that have been since received, which would address the uh, per staff comments. And similar or kind of the standard um, conditions for new houses to be flood compliant. And then we have that the engineered site plan be revised, which they have already met, that the driveway be made pervious. That was addressed in their revisions as well. And then the vegetative vegetative buffer planting plan, which they will work with staff for.
Okay, is there any discussion on this? Um. Let's proceed to a roll call vote if there's no discussion. Can you do that, Amelia?
Sure. See, so. Commissioner Tabachnik?
Assistant.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantor?
Yes.
Commissioner Wells?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryce?
Yes.
Commissioner Rowena?
Yes.
And Commissioner Scholman?
Yes.
I believe that's everyone who has seen it for the matter.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners.
We'll move on to our next matter. That's twenty twenty five dash sixty six cam. Susan H. and James H. Carter, the third. Sixteen North Port Drive. Constructed new flood compliance spa. With an existing elevated. Within an existing elevated patio. Uh. Less than fifty feet from the title of the room. Uh, who is here representing? Susan H. and James H. Carter, the third.
Hi, uh, Harry Russell with McCord Engineering.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Um. Good evening. Um, pretty straightforward application. I'd be happy to share my screen if you would like, but it's essentially installing an eight-by-twelve spa within an existing. Elevated patio. Um, there'll be no additional encroachments to the lagoon. Then there are currently uh, no ground disturbance proposed other than just temporary to access the site. Um, we've been giving a um. Sort of a the okay from the HOA to to use an existing dirt road that is off-site to access the property. So. Disturbance to our property will be very minimal. Um, steel fence will be installed uh, just to protect the lagoon. During construction. Um, it's anticipated to take about twelve weeks to install the spa. Um. The spa can will be located above the flood zone, so that portion of it is flood compliant. Um, no increase in impervious surfaces. There's no stormwater management proposed. Um. Uh. And that is essentially it. I'd be happy to answer any questions or show the site plan as well. And we also received uh, no staff comments. As well, a couple of days ago.
You're just talking about a hot tub on a patio? Is that what we mean by a spa?
Uh, yes, essentially, right. It's uh, and it's set flush with it.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions? Amelia, do you have any comments on this?
No comments on the proposal, but just some context for maybe some newer commissioners is that. Under the old regulations pre-Febuary twenty twenty four, uh, we allowed any work that was under nine hundred ninety-nine square feet. For a single-family residence to occur directly next to any coastal resources without any additional layer of review. So. With the new regulations in early twenty twenty four, we did require that any work within fifty feet of coastal resource be subject to coastal site plan review. Which is why you are seeing this. So it is capturing some smaller projects, but. Uh, in the grand scheme of things, it is very beneficial. And does have those uh, eight hundred square foot house additions that are happening two feet from the water. Be subject to review now. So it does seem, I understand it seems a little silly, but. I promise this is, I in my opinion, this is a beneficial regulation change, even if it does capture. Some smaller projects like this, but it is straightforward. I have a resolution for you if you would like, if you'd be making a motion.
Wonderful. We will uh, seat Anna for this. And um. Do I have a, is there a motion to approve?
This is shaping all move to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, good. Uh, will you bring up the proposal? I mean, the resolution?
Very short resolution in this case. Just build according to the site plan submitted with the erosion controls that were proposed.
Okay, wonderful. Uh, do you want to do a um? A roll call vote, please?
Gladly. Commissioner Tabachnik?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantor? Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryce?
Yes.
Commissioner Wells?
Yes.
Commissioner Scholman?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rowena?
Yes.
I'm glad no one's against hot tubs. I'm glad we're a pro-hot tub commission.
Yes, totally a pro-hot tub commission.
Glad to hear it. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on now to our public hearing for the evening. This is uh, twenty twenty five dash fifty-one. SPR slash cam. Spinnaker Acquisition LLC, one oh eight Water Street. Uh, it's a coastal site plan review application for the construction. Of a four-point-five-story mixed-use development. Is a public hearing and a report and recommended option. So. Please proceed.
Thank you. Uh, and and coming off of the hot tub, I will tell you in all seriousness, in the very near future. You're gonna see a cold plunge come in front of you. So I hope you're equally as supportive of cold.
No, 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 that's absurd, Adam. Like, I don't even bother.
Uh, all right. So with that, Adam Blank, uh, Wopsey Rosen for uh, Spinnaker Acquisitions, which is a contract purchaser at one oh eight Water Street. It's a joint venture between Spinnaker and the current and longtime owners of the property, the Gersten family. Uh, let me try to share my screen. Okay. Um. So on this application, uh, we've got. Uh, about two-point-seven-two acres located in the SD Marine Commercial Zone. Uh, let me just make sure that's. Up there. Great. Um, the uh. I just. Okay. Uh, so I've got the red X is where our parcel is. It's um, we're looking to construct a mixed-use development. Uh, boat slips, boardwalk, office space, personal service establishments at street level. Uh, apartments, a restaurant, water depend and and a water-dependent use that's in addition to the boat slips at the waterfront. Um, and and very substantial public realm, uh, public open space. Uh, the this is the existing uh, an aerial of the existing site. Now you could see the vast majority. Uh, is boat storage. Um, and there is uh, a small dock building business uh, onsite uh, as well. Uh, this is from the water side of. The proposed uh, project. I give you just a quick overview. You've already seen a small version, but this is a public hearing, so it kind of. Uh, be a little bit repetitive, but we'll try not to be too repetitive. Uh, but you're gonna hear briefly from me. Uh, then Vince Hines from Redness and Mead, the project engineer. Sealan Pather from Beinfield Architecture. Uh, then Eric Rains, the landscape architect. Uh, Matt Chuler and/or Azure D Slicer from Race Coastal Engineering. Uh, and finally, uh, Brian Dempsey from DTS Providence, the traffic engineer. They'll all give you um. Some form of presentation this evening. Uh, Henry Conroy and Matt Edwardson. Uh, from Spinnaker are are here for ownership to answer questions, not present. Um, we've given your staff uh, copies of the proof of notice of this hearing to the neighbors. Uh, we were in front of the Harbor Commission twice now, most recently last week where they where they reviewed the CAM-related concerns, deeps comments and the Harbor Management Plan. Ultimately found the application in conformity with the Harbor Management Plan. Uh, we received comments or sign-offs from all of the departments. I'll quickly tick through them. Uh, Building Department, uh, they're no longer, I guess, reviewing planning and zoning uh, applications. They they only want to see it at the at the. Building permit stage, so there's no comment or sign-off from them. Health did provide a sign-off. WPCA and DPW provided us with a approval letter with several minor questions uh, or clarifications for information to include on the plans. Um, we've updated the plans to include, we believe, what they've been looking for. We've also provided written responses uh, to those comments, which are part of the online materials. We believe those satisfy the items raised by TBW and WPCA. Uh, TMP, they had did have several comments. Some were sort of minor technical ones that we've agreed to. Uh, most related to streetscape infrastructure modifications. That they'd like to see based on the driveway entrance and exit configurations. We've been working with TMP on these items. We've we submitted a written response uh, to them, I think just this morning. Uh, maybe it was yesterday. Uh, we don't have any substantive objections to those uh, comments. Uh, and we'll we'll continue to fine-tune. Uh, the streetscape infrastructure portion of it with them over the next uh, weeks or months. Um, and. I think uh, we we've agreed that that. Those comments can be a condition of approval. I believe that your staff has, in fact, in the draft resolution already added them as conditions of approval. Which TMP has uh, not taken uh, an issue with them just being conditions of approval. Uh, we had a few meetings with the Fire Marshal's Office, uh, including within the past week. Uh, they had a concern, had a few concerns, although generally speaking, the concerns related to. If there was ever multiple fires in Norwalk and they couldn't bring, I'll say, a typically sized truck. Into the site and needed to bring their largest truck possible onto the site. Um, would our entrance drive and turning radius allow for their largest truck uh, access? Uh, so we've worked with them and and I think refined the plans and you'll hear from Sealan. Uh, that we've we've modified the plans to accommodate uh, those uh, concerns of the Fire Marshal. Um, and again, we we have no issue. With a condition of approval being signed off by the Fire Marshal. And of course. When you go for your zoning permit, the Fire Marshal has to sign off for you to be able to get a building permit anyway. So they're gonna sign off on it or we're not gonna build this no matter what. But I think you'll hear we've taken care of uh, those concerns. And so that's, those are sort of the departmental comments. Um, back to the development plans. Um, the existing site, as I said, uh, or I didn't say, but it provides no public access to the waterfront. And the redevelopment has obviously a much uh, nicer uh, public access. Uh, and landscaped uh, area with a boardwalk along the harbor. Um, we hope this is gonna serve as a catalyst for continued public walkway along the harbor for connectivity. A greater access up to the waterfront for Norwalk's residents. Um, we want to convert what is a private exclusive and really a primarily non-water-dependent site to a tremendous asset for all of Norwalk. Um, and this obviously isn't gonna cost the city. But between the development fee, the the P and Z one percent development fee, the transfer taxes and permitting fees, those are gonna. Well exceed a million dollars. And once we get the property up and stabilized five or six years out, we expect it'll be generating an additional five hundred thousand a year in property tax revenue. Um, this is, just so we're clear, a site plan application with a coastal site plan. Um, in other words, all the uses that we are proposing are permissible for the site. They're as-of-right uses. Um, in a mixed-use right building by site plan review, not a special permit. Um. Uh, you were, I think, yesterday or today, given a staff memo by Mr. Baker. That comprehensively laid out the zoning history for this side of uh, Water Street. Um, and he. I think correctly concluded that developments like the one, and these are his words, developments like the one proposed generally have been allowed within the Marine Commercial Zone. Since it's that, since its adoption in nineteen eighty-seven, so for roughly forty years. So we're not asking for anything novel or unprecedented, just asking you to approve what's allowed at this very location, a mixed-use project with a variety of uses, some water-dependent, some not. Some residential and some uses not residential. As I said, it's in the CAM zone. Um, we're partially in the AE twelve and 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 the VE fourteen flood zones. However, the buildings are all set back outside the VE zone. All living areas are above the twelve-foot base flood elevation, making them unlikely to flood even in the event of a hundred-year storm. Uh, we have a flood preparedness plan that's been submitted. Uh, setting forth procedures to be followed to ensure people can safely relocate uh, vehicles before severe flood. And that includes notifying residences of spaces that will be potentially affected by flooding. Permanent signage noting flooding risk and monitoring weather conditions by management. Uh, so notifications can be sent to all tenants via email, text, as well as posted. Um, the intent of the project is to create a uh. Community of complementary uses in a park-like setting where residents can live, eat, work. And remain connected to the harbor, right in the heart of downtown Sono. And of course, to create that feel that property is gonna contain various open-air walkways, patios, green spaces. Um, the we're gonna restore the bulkhead uh, at the waterfront, a grand staircase down to the water, so the public has literal access to the water. Expansive boardwalk, uh, the public realm area, uh, hatched area here. Uh. Again, in this S, in the Marine Commercial Zone, you require zero public realm, none. No public realm is required. Um, we're proposing about thirty-seven percent of the entire site as public realm. Which translates to over one acre of public realm space. Um, so that that public realm space, the boardwalk, boat slips. Which which and the public realm includes multiple public access paths from the street for the public. Down to the water are all sort of key aspects of the CAM application and substantial upgrades from the current site. Uh, we're proposing uh, roughly a hundred and ten thousand square feet and that's gross of office space. We've begun to market that office space to gauge market demand. We've had interest in the space. Uh, I think they've already had some meetings with potential uh, tenants. Um, cause it's a unique waterfront, high-end space, highly amenitized. And we think there'll be demand for the space. If it turns out that a hundred and ten thousand square feet was too ambitious, we'll come back to you. Uh, with with some modification to the plan. Obviously, that would have to come back for an approval if that happens. Hopefully, that will not. Um, the another nice aspect, I think, of this project is that being right next to uh. Washington Street and you know, Washington Street, the the restaurant and retailer sort of teeters on the brink and um. The uh, it's often actually difficult to find a restaurant that's open on a weekday for lunch. Uh, particularly Monday through Wednesday or Thursday. Uh, so this development will not only add residents in the apartments, but but really office folk too that will. Uh, we think inject some vitality into Washington Street in the weekday uh, afternoon hours. And help some of those businesses stay afloat. So we think it'll be an economic spark for Washington Street uh, as well. Additionally, uh, because this is a the. Existing site, this is the existing site, so we are not. Displacing any people that are already living in Sono. You know, nobody's getting kicked out of their their house uh, for this uh, development. Um, and. Again, we we think that that the. Way this site has been designed with the public realm, the complementary uses, the contextual architecture with the maritime connection. Uh, is all gonna be a great addition for the city. And and fits in precisely with what the Marine Commercial District uh, allows and intended. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to the rest of the team, but I I'm gonna just warn you when you're. Hurt enough after forty-five minutes or an hour or so, that I got a little more to say after the rest of the folks talk. Um, and so so bear with me at the end for for a few for for a few minutes. Um, but at this point. Uh, absent immediate questions for me. I'd like to kick it to Vince Hines uh, of Redness and Mead.
I have one question. Uh, if we go back to the hatched area for the uh, public access. I don't have a really clear idea of how we would. I don't have a really clear idea of how you would, if you're walking along the street, access the public access.
So I will let.
Adam?
Yep.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say I can cover that during my piece of the presentation.
Yeah, yeah. So Galen, if you bear with us, and there are three different access points and we'll go through, we'll go through them for you. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah. So one, two, three, but we'll, we'll, Vince will cover those.
Excuse me. Good evening. For the record, my name is Vincent Hines, licensed engineer with Redness and Mead, having offices in Stanford and Wilton. Our office has provided engineering and surveying services for this development here. So if there are any site plan specific comments, I'm happy to respond. But in the meantime, I'll hopefully keep my presentation as short as I can for you. So hopefully you can see my screen now. As Adam said, the, the site is about 2.7 acres as measured to the mean high water line being that we're right at the harbor. And it lies, lies along the developed kind of western shorefront of the harbor, adjacent to the intersection with Hanford Place and Water Street. The, the site itself is currently developed with a mix of single story buildings, upgrade parking that consists both of paved and compacted gravel surfaces. You can kind of see it here and you can kind of see it from Adam's aerial view. There's no real notable green area that exists on the site today. And there are no formal drainage systems in place either. So with that, the site, the site stormwater runoff does one of two things. It either discharges directly into the harbor via sheet flow as it, as it goes towards the east. Or it discharges via sheet flow into the Water Street right of way where it's collected via the city's stormwater management system. And eventually discharges to the harbor via easement at 130 Water Street. And I'll just fast forward to this plan for a second. This just gives you an idea of what that drainage network consists of in Water Street. We have our site here highlighted. So some of that site is getting into that, you know, catch basin infrastructure within Water Street. And then ultimately discharges through 130 Water Street and connects to the harbor. As such, 100% of the stormwater runoff from the site is tributary to the harbor.
Vince, to say that back to.
If I may, but as, as you know, Water Street floods with some frequency. What happens to that runoff when Water Street is already inundated?
Yeah. So, so typically the, not, not every storm aligns with your more nuisance type flooding of Water Street. Cause your, Water Street is flooding because of the low lying nature. And, and that's both, yes, storm surge related, but also your springing king, king tides. So with that in mind, it, not every storm is causing that flooding issue. And, and the site would just be inundated today as it is, as is Water Street. And, and I'll, I'll speak to some of that further with our design later on in my, in the presentation here.
Yeah. Mr. Cantor, did you have a?
Yeah. Just to say it back to you. What you're saying here is the current conditions of the, the site amplifies the flooding in the area because of how it's, you know, it's just a giant sheet of asphalt and everything is being dumped into the, the system.
Yeah. To, to some extent, yes. But like I said, a portion of the site does immediately discharge to the harbor while a portion of it goes to that Water Street infrastructure. And, and just as a precursor, the, the proposal before you includes a stormwater management system that provides water quality volume amongst other things, but also peak attenuations for stormwater from the site. And in total, the proposed water runoff going to Water Street is going to be less under the proposed conditions. So I, I came back to this existing conditions map here. Just to point out, like Adam said, we have the, the flood zone limit line here. Kind of this dashed dark line, which represents AE 12, flood elevation 12 to the west and the, the velocity zone at elevation 14 to the east. With respect to that flood zone, you know, there's an existing shoreline that's developed, contains a mix of dilapidated timber and concrete structures, miscellaneous piles and debris. So that, that's this shorefront here, you know, for that stormwater runoff that is tributary directly to the harbor does have some level of erosion naturally occurring with, with its condition currently. And would be susceptible to kind of impact during a flooding event. So I just wanted to point that out while I had the existing condition map here. Skipping forward to our proposal now. As, as Adam indicated, the site design includes a four and a half story building with covered parking and both residential and public amenity spaces, including the publicly accessible boardwalk here on the, on the harbor side. The design includes your city, city standard streetscape elements such as tree pits, lighting, sidewalks, brick amenity zones, as well as onsite drainage improvements to meet the requirements of both the zoning regulations and the city drainage manual. With respect to that streetscape, and again, as Adam indicated, we are working with TMP. They have comments that they would like to continue working with the applicant on the design, just kind of as it relates to some of the existing traffic infrastructure in, in that streetscape element and, you know, including the mast arms for Hanford Place and Water Street. So they, they want to discuss reconfiguring that in a way that it, it's not just left in the middle of the sidewalk at the end of the day, so that we have a, an unobstructed walking, walking path for the pedestrian traffic.
Excuse me. In your flood preparedness plan, it states it is the responsibility of residents to take action to relocate their vehicles. So where are, where could they relocate their vehicles in the chance of an emergency?
Yes. So, so they, they can relocate. Believe the, the report goes on to have that information. Either later that page or, or the next page. But they can relocate to any of the higher ground public garages. Yankee Doodle, the, the train station.
Yeah, I see that. But in, in the event that those lots are occupied, because other locations would probably try to do the same.
Understood.
Yeah. And I guess it would be out of luck then, huh?
I can help with that possibly.
Okay.
I'm sure Yankee Doodle has ever been fully occupied, ever.
Adam, I can help with this.
Yes, certainly, Eric.
So the, the policy, I'm chairman of the parking authority. The policy is, and the practice is that we open those structures during a storm event. And we haven't had an issue with capacity thus far.
Now in this, a lot of talk about relocating vehicles, about actually relocating themselves, their bodies.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you.
Well, you're talking about relocating the emergency and relocated vehicles, but are the people intended then to stay in the building? While a storm event occurs? Or you're going to relocate the people as well?
Yes. Yeah. So we do have language. And, and I, between me later in my presentation and Sealan, we're going to talk kind of to the residential nature of, of the site, but we do have, like Commissioner Williams pointed out, we do have the flood preparedness plan, which is in place to provide the precautions necessary to give residents, tenants, ownership, the feedback needed ahead of a storm.
We bought them. I, I read the preparedness plan. And worn them, but I don't see anything in it unless I really.
Yeah. And we, and we also have finished floor elevations, two feet above the base flood elevation for the commercial spaces and seven feet above the base flood elevation for the residential floor areas.
So they just stay inside. They're worn, but they just stay in their apartments. It's that's the idea.
Commissioner Wells is Sealan part of principal Beinfield architecture. In terms of the building code, yes, for a flood event, you could stay in your apartment. The building is designed to let water, water in and through the structure designed to equalize the flood pressure, the pressure from flood. So it doesn't pose a hazard to someone being above the flood elevation, above the level of concrete that we provided in their unit. The evacuation comes in a fire or similar event.
Are there hurricane windows? Are the windows hurricane resistant?
They, we haven't got to that level of detail yet, but we haven't provided them on similar projects in this zone. If it's in a velocity zone, that I'm, 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 I should, I should speak more clearly about that, more, give you a more informed opinion, but not in buildings in similar zones. We haven't provided hurricane proof windows.
Yeah, but I think to Ms. Wells' comment, if, if there's a hurricane coming, the residents are going to be notified and advised that they should find the higher ground and leave. And if the city orders them out, they have to be moved out. I don't think the owner has the ability to, to force them to leave if they don't want to. But they would be encouraged to leave, just like the thousands of other residents in Norwalk that live in the AE zone. But if the question is, 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 is the, is the applicant going to be providing alternative housing for residents for an overnight for when storms come? The answer to that is no, but they would certainly be notified. And if it's, if it's in their best interests to leave, they'll be encouraged to leave. And we do have, we do as part of the plan, they will all be, we'll be getting all of their cell phone numbers and they'll all be getting text notifications.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. So I, I was going to get into the boardwalk access actually next. So we have a, at least three different means of reaching the boardwalk. We have ADA accessible walkways, both on the, the south side of the site and the north side, side of the site, which connect your streetscape along Water Street all the way to the boardwalk for, for that access. And then in addition, pedestrians can access a grand stair kind of more centrally located across from Hanford Place that will connect them to the courtyard space that overlooks the boardwalk. And this path, this pathway here is also accessible via elevator designed internally to the building that, that again, connects you to that same walking path. And then once you're at the upper court level, you can choose to go to any of the commercial spaces, or you could choose to take this kind of meandering path down toward the boardwalk.
The thing I was curious about is will there be signage or will there be something to indicate? Like if you're walking along the, the, the ends of the property?
Yes.
In public access, and you're welcome to come into the building to access public.
Yeah. So, so we'll come up. Yeah, we'll, we'll come up with a signage package. The signage package hasn't been designed as of yet, but we've talked to TMP about this as well and for, and DPW about providing adequate signage, kind of pointing the public to these accessible pathways.
Do you have a photo? Oh, sorry, Galen.
Steve, I had a question here.
Mr. Cantor can go ahead. I'll wait.
I was just asking if there, do you have a photo from the street of that staircase that you just referred to?
Yes.
Yeah, I do.
Sealan has one.
Mr. Cantor, I'll show it to you.
Awesome. When we get to it. No, we can do it later, whichever.
Hey Steve?
Sure. Thank you. I, I had a question and concern related to kind of the similar thing to what Chairman Wells just stated, and also how it relates to being a water dependent use. Can, can, and if not, why not? Can the walkways on both sides be wider? Just because I don't think as proposed, it's going to seem very publicly inviting. I understand you also have access through the middle, but I, my concern is most people won't kind of figure they have rights to enter that piece. So I, I know you're saying it, and I think you can argue it that the public access at the back and, and the green space is, is good, can be argued it's a water dependent use versus what's on the site now, which I think is, is also a water dependent use. But if, if that with of those two walkways were wider, I think it would definitely be more inviting and then be more, more of something you could argue was something the public had, you know, realized access to, and then perhaps just enhance the project and make it seem much more like a water dependent use.
We, we have, this is our, we, we have that shown in a rendering, Mr. Clapton. And it might help alleviate some of your concern.
Yeah. I mean, I've seen the renderings in the packet. So if this is something new, then I'll look forward to seeing it.
Yeah, there's a direct response, design response to the, that's a similar comment that came up last time. So I'll, I'll show you that when I, when I go through it.
Sealan is also going to point this out, but since I'm on the site plan. And as Adam pointed out, the, the fire code requires us to have a 20 foot wide access for their trucks to make adequate maneuvers. So the, the driveway shown here was actually limited to 12 and 16 feet, depending on where you were. That is, that driveway width is going to increase to 20 feet, which then meets the fire code requirements and, and slightly reduces the kind of rentable floor areas of the adjacent space. Cause we're, to, to Steve's point, we're, we're not going to reduce the width of the sidewalk for that 20 foot width. We're, we're reducing the rentable square footage at that point to accommodate that requirement. With all, with all these things said, the proposal includes a total decrease of impervious coverage of close to 12,000 square feet. This includes your landscape zones, permeable walkway surfaces and, and the public realm areas. Although counted towards the impervious coverage for zoning purposes, there is approximately 11,650 square feet of green roof area on the upper levels of the building, which provides additional benefit to water quality as they will consist of plantings and soil trays of at least six inches of soil depth. In addition to that decrease in, in overall impervious coverage, there are two underground infiltration systems proposed to provide water quality treatment and, and peak rates of runoff attenuation. One system on the, on the western side of the site is below the lower level of the garage. And the tributary area to that consists of the driveway ramp areas on either side of the site and the kind of front portion of roof area. This system will have an overflow structure with the overflow set above the water quality volume limit. Uh with the overflow set above the water quality volume limit. Uh that will ultimately be piped to the city stormwater network. Uh as I indicated earlier, the total tributary flow. Uh to the city drainage network is actually decreased. Uh just in in total area alone, but also helped by the fact that we have this underground infiltration system.
What would you estimate that uh decrease is? On percentage terms, if you know.
I can skip ahead. Thought I had that number handy. I I think it was fifty five to sixty percent of the total uh runoff rate. Uh to the Water Street infrastructure that was reduced.
Thank you.
The the second sys-
Oh, continue. I'll ask my question after.
Okay, you sure?
Yes, because it's about what you're about to say, so.
Okay, the the second system is located on the east part of the site, uh and the tributary area is the remainder of the roof area. Uh similar to the first system, there's an overflow. Uh structure that is set to provide the water quality volume. And then a new pipe is uh proposed to discharge to the harbor. That pipe also collects overflow drains within the. Permeable walk surfaces on either side of the site. With that in mind, the permeable walking surfaces include stone reservoirs. Below grade to capture and treat kind of the direct runoff that falls on those walking surfaces.
So is a question on these um uh two two catch basins and and treatment, um so. In addition to reducing the amount of runoff from the site, as you mentioned a moment ago. Uh this also uh improves the the water quality. Am I understanding that right? So even if the water is still running to both Water Street and into the harbor, uh the water quality that will. Um leave these systems is uh with less sediment and contaminants. Is that accurate?
Correct, yep. Yeah, via via the stone. The stone underneath these systems that allows that. Kind of suspended solids and uh. To to be reduced, you you your typical water quality. Being the one one point three inches of, you know, first flush of rain.
Okay, yep. Thank you.
Uh absolutely. In total, uh with that said, in total seventy nine percent of the total site area. Is treated via the underground infiltration systems. Permeable walking surfaces and then, like I said, the green roof area. Uh which exceeds the kind of seventy five percent requirement of the regs and and further the kind of. Non. Non-system that's there today uh under existing conditions. Uh and of that seventy nine percent of this total site area, it includes ninety one percent. Of your buildings, drives and walkway surfaces, so your impervious surfaces are primarily captured and treated. Uh before discharging off of the site. And then in total. The the runoff flow and volume are both. Reduced up to and including the one hundred year storm event. A- as part of the site plan package, we also have a sediment erosion control plan. That helps provide guidance for erosion control, dust control. Uh and and other means to kind of minimize potential impacts of construction activities. Once the, once the site contractor was chosen and. Uh starting to do any excavation work. Uh getting back to the flood zone, I know we we talked about it briefly earlier. The the first floor commercial space. Uh let me back up. The building foundations are designed to be located. In the AE zone, not the VE zone. Uh and as such, the the building is being designed to meet the AE standards. Uh and the city flood zone standards uh requirements. The the commercial space floor elevation is set at elevation fourteen, which is two feet above the BFE. Uh and the the residential floor uh is set seven feet above at elevation nineteen. With the construction uh of uh. Kind of reconstruction of a bulkhead and the boat slips. And removal of any existing debris and piles. This project would also help re- rehab the shoreline. To improve the stability and resiliency uh of this particular shorefront. Uh and. That with the bulkhead replacement kind of helps minimize any damage. Future damage to upland areas from flood and erosion impacts through this site. Uh the the site engineering report. I said it at our last meeting, offers discussion of the drainage within Water Street. Kind of as it relates to those low points and ponding water. Uh and makes further reference to the resilient South Norwalk report that was prepared for the city by AECom. The low points are known to pool water during the spring and king tides and and also minor and major coastal storm surges. The that come to the. Come to our shores in Norwalk here. The that AECom report. Ultimately recommends that elevating sections of Water Street. Would help benefit to reduce the frequency and the depths of the potential flooding that occurs from those spring and king tides and surge events. Uh and we understand that no one owner can achieve that broader result. But we have taken that recommendation into account. Um you'll you'll see that our lower garage elevation is set to elevation nine, which is actually the recommended elevation. For Water Street in the AECom report. And we've set and the lobbies of the site are designed such that. They can be converted to elevation nine should uh should the city ever ultimately increase that elevation of Water Street. While general stormwater events alone don't cause the particular issue, we have accounted for designed improvements. These include. The the direct connection to the harbor, which. Again, minimizes the rate and volumes of water tributary to the receiving infrastructure in Water Street. We have also further discussed since our last meeting. Implementation of a backflow preventer at uh the Water Street Drainage uh Outfall at one thirty Water Street. Uh we've had those conversations with DPW and I believe they've recommended a. Resolution language to the effect of working with the applicant. Uh here on creating a design plan uh and paying for part of that cost of. Implementing and installing a backflow preventer there. We believe that alone could provide. Upwards of twelve to eighteen inches of benefit, uh which would then limit your nuisance flooding that occurs during some of those. Spring and king tides. With that, I've uh. Exhausted what I wanted to say, but happy to answer any other questions.
Mr. Heinz, um to that point that you were just making, I I thought I saw a little bit earlier that you had a diagram depicting what that benefit might look like. In the street, do you mind pulling that back up? It was one of the earlier. Yeah, do you mind walking us through this?
Yeah, so so this uh. Kind of color exhibit here. Uh just shows you the elevations of Water Street and the surrounding areas uh as it relates to. The. NAVD eighty eight datum, uh and this kind of is a conglomerate of. Uh information that we've obtained from past surveys, city, city available GIS. Uh and and stormwater infrastructure diagrams that DPW has had. Um but it shows these areas in kind of red, orange. Are your most low lying areas and then. You slightly, you know, you slightly go up. Every every foot is a different variation of color. Uh so most of Water Street in this general vicinity is going to be elevation seven or lower. Uh when the AE zone here is elevation twelve. So.
Fitz, can I just jump for one sec to. Jay, Mr. Bryce, the the blue on this color coded map. That's the only areas that are above the flood zone. So if you're talking about dry egress, if you use that term, or if you use any any of those kinds of terms, it would be the blue. And we'll talk about it at the end when I talk a little bit more. That essentially for a large swath of South Norwalk, and in fact, a lot of other areas of Norwalk. Your, all of your parcels and the roadways that abut them are in the AE zone. They are, they are within the flood zone. And it is the same issue for for many, many, many properties.
Sure, although what I'm seeing here is uh the proposal to put in this backflow valve. Would provide some benefit to this area within the the dotted line, right? So even though it's low lying. Having this in place would help out during some of the events. Throughout the years. Mr. Heinz, do you mind describing a bit more about what the spring and king tides are? I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with what those are and. Like how frequent they they are.
Yeah, so those those just refer to kind of your your monthly or or your annual tides. So it's not your necessarily your daily high tide, but. Uh the the monthly high tides and annual high tides that come through uh less frequently. Uh and then. To to the question you were had originally asked, yeah, there's like a and and like I've said. The benefit of adding the backflow preventer. At this pipe here, it's a sixty inch outfall pipe is. Is twelve to eighteen inches of benefit within this dashed line. Uh and I misspoke, spring is uh, spring tides are. A a high tide that occurs a couple of times a month, uh not.
Okay.
So this could have. Not just once a month.
Sure, so this could have um. More more frequent impact, um the. Having this in place could have more frequent impact on reducing flooding and and water and Water Street. Am I understanding that right?
Correct, yeah, yeah, it it would reduce those nuisance flooding associated with with those tides.
Vince, I'm fine. If you mind, I'll jump in for one second.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bryce, I'd have happily talk to you about it anecdotally, Henry Conrad from Spinnaker Real Estate Partners. Um our office is actually happens to be just right up the street from the site. And if you go to Water Street at any high tide. And you look at the catch basins along this area, you'll see that the water level is, has filled the catch basin. Whether it goes over the top of the catch basin or not, is subject to, you know, what Vince is caught talking about the spring or king tides when. The tide gets a a little bit higher because based on the moon or whatever other reasons that the tide gets higher. Um but every single day at high tide, if you look in the catch basin, it's filling up. And so the idea is that this backflow preventer is stopping that. Daily occurrence and under the condition where the tide gets a little bit higher one, a couple of times a month. Will actually prevent it from overflowing um because Water Street and those catch basins are lower than the outlet is. At one thirty Water Street, so we think. For the benefit of the city, putting this backflow preventer will will backflow preventer will stop a lot of the, what we're calling nuisance, meaning. A couple of times a month, you drive down Water Street and it's flooded. That that should go away. Uh it doesn't stop a a major storm event. But it it should have. One, a significant impact on the proposed development. I mean, the, any residents in the development don't have to worry about flooding and then just the residents in the greater Norwalk area, including. Ourselves who work in Norwalk, um it should have a significant impact on on driving in that neighborhood.
Thank you.
And and I recommend going down and you can feel free to, I mean, public road, but you can go take a look, just look up the high tide and you can go see it. And it's really interesting to see how how frequently it's happening and how just a little bit of a change can can flood that street based on its infrastructure.
Sure, thank you both. Yeah, I was trying to uh better understand the the benefit of this proposal here, um you know, and. To what you were raising before attorney blank, yes, uh in in a better understanding of the the dry egress piece. Uh but to also just understand like what this component means as far as like outcomes for Water Street in this area, so thank you.
And and I I will also add that we've had a lot of conversations with DPW and. I I believe they're the reason they. They have agreed to partner with us in installing the backflow preventer because they recognize that this is an issue and and this is a realistic. Uh improvement that could be made. You know, without. Years of debate or or going back and forth, it's a solution, it's not gonna fix everything, but. You know, as a part of our application can say. Tomorrow we can work towards actually fixing this problem to to some extent, and I think they they're excited about that opportunity as well.
Um can I ask one more question about the backflow, uh backflow prevent, preventer?
Yes.
Yep.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Yes, definitely.
How big a project is it, you know, in scope of time to install and scope of, you know, approximate costs? And is it possible to install more than one? I guess is where I'm going.
Vince, you should answer most of this cost. We honestly aren't a hundred percent sure. We think it could be anywhere from fifty to a hundred thousand dollars or some numbers that we've thrown out. It might be more than that. It is. The scope of this specific installation is not um. Terribly substantial based on what we think the benefit would be and that there's basically a big hole. That lets water into it at a seawall nearby and we can put something in front of it that. Um prevents water from flowing through.
There is, there is, and there is, there is a um a permitting process through deep, do that, so it's a time consuming endeavor.
That's probably more where a lot of, the the actual installation. We don't think will take that much time, but it's more so the the permitting process. Deep or DOT or any other state departments that may have purview over it. Also, it's on another property which is not ours. Uh and then there is.
Yeah, yeah.
As well, that the that DPW will have to endeavor to uh maintain the backflow preventer.
Okay, thank you.
To answer, uh Vince, I don't, I don't know about other backflow preventers in the area. This has been identified as the the major. Um the the location that has the most dramatic impact. I don't know if there are any other ones close by. I think this is. The the main location.
Okay, thank you.
And not that we have uh networked. Does it doesn't mean that there's not another one that uh exists that could use the same benefit.
And and if it works well, I think the city, you know, DPW would be willing to to put that into other locations, depending on what the outcomes are. Which we think.
Like a good plan. Okay, thank you.
Um if there's not more for Vince, um Seelin, do you want to talk about the architecture for a few?
Yes, thanks, Adam. Uh Sealan Pathak, Bantville Lockfish for the record. Good evening, everybody. Share my screen. You'll see that?
Yep.
She, Adam, you see my screen?
Yeah, it's out.
All right, cool. Actually, generally, as we we thought about this project, we focus on a few specific design concepts, uh how to create a streetscape. Is this is slightly challenging in most of historic South Norwalk. Because the required flood elevation, as we've been discussing, is a few foot higher than the street in many cases. Uh but our design work and projects like Ironworks, Hubbeside Sonal, and most recently Seventeen One Water Street, which came before you. Has taught us that a meaningful connectivity from the sidewalk in and through the building helps solve this. And all those projects had that, and I'll just demonstrate our approach here. Uh the second concept was to create connectivity, connectivity to and across. Uh to the water and across the water in front of it. Um and hopefully create what is a destination public space in the water at the end of that connection. Uh the third was to create a con- to create contextual architecture that was both inspired by buildings in historic South Norwalk. And also evolved maritime architectural vernacular. So I'll go through the slides to show you how we think we met those conceptual goals. I'll start here just to reiterate that. Start you just to recreate that, um there is no connection to the water right now. And in terms of connections through the building, for example, Hubbeside Sonal has that connection straight down. And in terms of connections through the building, for example, Harborside Sonal has that connection straight down the middle. And Ironworks has connections, pedestrian connections through the building at various points. And that was a joint effort between us and the state of Norwalk when we did that design. And we hope it is the same here. As a reference, before I get off this, Steve, I was just measuring in Google, to be clear, in Google. That the sidewalk, the concrete portion of it is about five feet and brick shelves about two and a half feet for a total of seven and a half. If you include the brick shelf, and we've got a minimum of six and a half on either side of our plan. And that's a minimum because I'll show you how it expands. So we'll start with the connectivity. Yes, and I'll get into the into the details that you want to see. But there's three parts to the water. There's one on the edge here, one on the edge here, and one through the middle. And the idea is to create this this facade that both lines the street and creates a streetscape. It's a common urban planning concept that you want to maintain. And then you have make it permeable so that you can walk through it. It's a minimum of six foot four inches, I wrote down on this edge and six foot four. It's important to note that this opens up to about at least ten to twelve feet. Once you get past this edge. And on the north side. Spinnaker is working with Sonos Seafood. It's not a done deal, but we're trying to figure out a way to expand the sidewalk. As you come off Water Street and through the space and then hopefully have like a joint sort of experience. Tables out here, dining patio for Sonos Seafood, maybe on our property because it makes sense. Let this boardwalk extends, you walk up into the dining patio and across because they have some dining out here if you've been out there. So maybe there's a switch if we put some of their dining on our property that you can extend boardwalk where they currently have tables. So those conversations are happening. But the idea is, you know, to get people to come down here. So we're interested in that also. Another reason that we wanted to focus on the middle is that a hand fit place, there's this two sidewalks. So two crosswalks, a crosswalk now that comes across. And that's more, it's closer to the central area, central connection than it is the edges. So that was meaningful for us also. In terms of the overall uses, this diagram shows that the there's residential uses closer to Water Street. They're above a podium, double podium, there's parking below this. Then there's a deck and then there's the upper deck and then the residential uses. And then office on either side. And here's your public space on the water. So this plan shows the parking at nine. It's it'll take take a while for you to click in on how these buildings connect. It's not a it's not complicated, but it is a complex series of of maneuvers to get between the buildings. But the basic concept is all the buildings do connect. You have these lobbies here for the residential, you have lobbies for the public, you have lobbies for the restaurant, and you have lobbies for the office. So once you're in this parking at nine, you can get up into all those spaces. Now you're above nine, you're at nineteen. So you waited to get up to these spaces again. By the residential lobby, a public lobby, lobby coming up, sorry, always coming up in the office area. That's about the the officer and the restaurant and always coming up to serve for the water dependence use in the offices here. And then this pedestrian walk, central pedestrian walk down the middle. The idea here is that you walk up, it's a curated edge. And hopefully we create some drama once you arrive at this, you look over the water and I'll show you an image for that right at the end. What this shows is retail or retail like spaces, personal service establishment spaces at fourteen, two foot above flood to meet your requirements. And the way that you access that is you walk up the stairs and you go up this terrace, walk up the stairs here and up to this terrace here. Or if you need if accessible entrance in a wheelchair, there's a public elevator that you come up, you landed this landing and come through. Once you get up to this upper level, there's sent the heart of the project is a central area that has a drop off. And that'll serve the office here, the office here, and the leasing lobby. So if you you dropped off here and stand, you have a choice of three entrances. And then you could also walk down to this water dependent use and to the restaurant here. At this point, you're in an entirely public space and you can meander down the path to the boardwalk. I want to do when I just drew the sentence before the meeting. And I only include this because it came up in our harbor side, sorry, harbor commission meeting. And they were asking about the concept of if there's both a flood and a fire, and to be clear, that's that's a high barrier, but both a flood and a fire. How what would you do? I'll take a step back and say that the code doesn't require you to plan egress around flood events. So we meet all the code, the egress requirements for for arriving at a public right of way, which is the code code for getting out of a building and that right of way is Water Street. Obviously, it's in the flood plan. What we're showing here is an area of dispersment. It's just because the nature of the site and we've created such a large public space and I'm indicating here about eighteen thousand square foot that's above elevation twelve, to be clear. So I'm not including all of it, just a portion of this open space that's above elevation twelve. Showing that there's eighteen thousand square foot, meeting the code requirement of being fifty foot away from the residential building or the building up here, which is the use that you're most concerned with, the residential use. That people could actually leave the building, the residential building, come down to this lower podium from the upper podium where the residential building is. And be in this general area until either waters recede, if there's a fire and a flood, waters recede or but the the fire department can get to them via their boat, which they have on the water side. So a unique condition here in that we can provide an area of dispersment where people can stand away from a fire even during a flood event. So I brought that up at the Harbor Commission, but at this, they didn't see this diagram. I'm showing it to you. So this is a view down the middle. The entrance of the of of the of the street down the middle of the building. And so this is that grand gesture. We hope it's a grand gesture. We think it's a grand gesture. It's a good idea, Commissioner Wells, we should have good signage that shows it's public and and people understand it's public. And you can see we're hinting that there is signage here on on this on this wall. Eric Rains will explain how he softened the edges and there's a lot of space in front of the actual required sidewalk. But this is meant to to lead you into the space. It's a bit of constriction release. It's released here, constriction, and then release again. That's at mid landing at fourteen that takes you to the to these commercial uses. Sorry, was a question?
Yes, excuse me. You know, just looking at this, if I was on the street, I would never see this as inviting me in to the public space. Because it looks like you're going into the into a building. In a grand staircase, no banister, but nonetheless, maybe there is somewhere there are banisters. Because I'm banister crazy.
I'll show you an example and you tell me if tell me if we're on the wrong track here, but this is bolt and exists. We'll feel like that. We know we can improve it. We think we've had a successful treatment of here this when we did this design this years ago. The idea was the public knew to come up and go to those those the retail establishments at the first floor here. The large staircase that brings you into the building.
Well, it's different if you're going to a store than if you're going to a public space where you have access to the
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I'm so sorry, Galen. I'm having like problems and I just we wanted to make sure it could be all because I tried to say the same thing five times. Fifty five thousand percent with Galen. And looking at that picture of Harbor Side Sonal, I can tell you I wasn't on the commission when that was approved. But I've walked past that so many times and I never realized that that was public access, public space. And I'm looking at it now and I still like 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 I've been by there, never thought that there was somewhere I could go through that passageway. So while I understand that 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 may have been done in the past, I think there's room for improvement here.
Okay, so let me finish the 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 next slide and then we'll come back to this. Like I think it's a collective idea of permeability. So because I have I have very specific comments on how we're dealing with both the idea that we can't drive flood proof these buildings, they have to be the any use has to be above fourteen and above. So that's the nature of the site. And you have to provide a raised access with ramps and so on, and this doesn't. But let me show you this. So in response to a comment.
No, no, I can wait till he's finished up with his couple of slides. Thanks, though.
And in response to the comment about needing to to add a specific design to the edges here at the building to enhance that sidewalk experience as you you coming down on the one of the three. So this will be on both sides. So this is a similar treatment on both sides. One of the three areas that you can walk through. Now we've specifically said, all right, let's make it obvious that you can and should walk down here. And again, this is a minimum of six foot four and it opens up about fifteen feet. We created this cantilever light treatment over the top, which involves some maritime vernacular again. But a carefully designed element that says leads you through and that was that was the thought process with all of this. I think part of it is a learned behavior, right? You you will you will know with good signage and we should provide that that you should, if you want to access the water, either avenue is available to you. As is as is learned behavior in any city, when you find courtyard that are behind building faces in New York City and so on, you you they're not all obvious, but it's a learned behavior. But actually understood that you have you need good design and good signage to bring you through. So we'll we'll seek to improve this, but we think I think improvement is signage, lighting, elements like that.
Sealan, this reminds me a little bit of like the elevated acre in Manhattan. Like that entry on Water Street down in Manhattan, funny enough. Of like, it's sort of in the same way. It's it's an entryway in the middle of a building that leads to an acre, which is just happens to be an acre as well of parkland on the other side, which is pretty, which is really cool in my opinion. Same sort of staircase.
I don't know that one. Steve? Yeah, but that was the idea. So let me show you the payoff, right? And there's a few components that come together if you think about this in three D. So you're going to come out through here in this building, you're going to this is the other side of it, you're going to come up through here. And that's and this is what you're going to see. Does it? It's a it's a curated like walk through the space set up to be open. And I am completely understand it should be should have appropriate signage and and lighting and should be inviting. The idea is to bring you through it with those components and then release you to this. So that was a design idea anyway. Alright, so sorry, with any other questions? Steve, you had something on. Do you want to talk about?
Yeah, and it's related to that.
This is what we're talking about.
Yeah, and I think that's a nice touch. I I to me, the with picking up on what Mr. Batchnick said, I think and also Miss Wells is the, I think, especially in the middle and well, actually equally on the sides as well, is just if they could be wider, I think that would help a lot. I I mean, I'm thinking about like when I travel and I like you know, older cities and they have these kind of like weird little alleyway staircases. I like to travel them out among which can be cool. But that one, I think, is a little tight unless you did something to really pull people in. I'm thinking like some of the things, you know, I maybe not ear from, but I know Eric was involved with with like the last piece of the waypoint development that's under construction now. We we talked, we spent a lot of time talking about how do you pull people up from from the park area and through the the museum up back into waypoint into the development and make it more active in, you know, terms of different treatments and things you could do. I think anything you could do to make that more inviting and maybe there's you know, maybe there's a way we can condition something, you know, if it can, if the commission ultimately looks favorably on the application, there could be some kind of condition of approval that you have to kind of modify something to come back and show us how that's going to be addressed. But I'll I'll leave that up to the commission.
Yeah, I think it would be nice if you had issue there.
If you had a what?
If you had some art, some something to draw the public in, like at the entryway, maybe a nice piece of art or, you know, like a fun animal. I don't know, they have like different installations around different cities. Some cities have cows, some city have birds decorated.
Could do something on the sidewalk too.
There's also a lighting element.
Stairs to get a closer look and then they will see that beautiful view that you just had there. I would definitely enjoy that very much.
Yeah, I think
I was thinking like the signage of the Norwalk River Valley Trail where they've got the things on the sidewalk and the signs, you know, don't forget to turn this way to check this out type of thing.
Maybe there's some patterns, you could do something maybe like patterns in the sidewalk or something like something marine related to pull them up the area.
But that's an awesome view.
So that's a good idea. And Stephen Matt just texting me saying that, you know, maybe there's in the pavement treatment specifically turns and goes up the stairs and through and so on. So we can look at that, but
We we don't have an objection to a condition that we 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 refine this a bit further on the the signage and the the detail for the public access to make it a little more inviting.
Yeah.
Steve, you you asked before specifically specifically what's, you know, what what the impacts if you make, if you push this towards in, and it's the parking. Because we just did it and we we had to reconfigure the entire parking layout for, and I'll expand that in a second for the fire marshal who wanted twenty foot wide lanes where we had sixteen foot lanes, but with you can see that, you know, for each foot you'd lose, for each few feet, you'd lose a row of parking on two levels. So that's the direct impact besides the rentable square footage and all of that, obviously, but that's the direct impact.
Okay, thank you.
That's what we're struggling with. We're not being intentionally resistant. It is a complicated design issue to push them together.
But Sealan, to say that back to you, if if we had less parking. Then you can make the paths bigger.
You'd lose you'd lose rentable, you lose unit space.
You use rentable real estate as well. Gotcha. Okay, so it's not just the parking.
Not just the parking, yeah.
But and we we may be able to, I mean, we we can't commit to it because we don't quite know yet, but but by widening and Sealan's going to go over it, but but by widening the access drives to twenty feet. There may be ways to make that additional inviting public, you know, entrance space. Because it's not going to be, it would likely be a multiple different surfaces on that on that access way. Because you don't need a twenty feet wide for for regular, you just need it to be flush. So a fire truck can can use that width.
So on that. These are changes we made for the fire marshal. There are a few, I'll just quickly run to them. He wanted twenty a twenty foot wide vehicle access. So where was sixteen, it's now twenty. And an important thing here is he needs twenty clear. But we just need about fourteen a foot, fourteen foot or so of that to drive on for cars coming in every day. So we're going to pave the edges differently. So that it you can actually walk up here also. You can walk up the driveway on it. So another access now of pedestrians. Because the twenty, the full twenty foot is only for for fire truck and emergency. There's another access up the site. Then you and you haven't seen that before and that's that's pretty new because of the fire marshal requirement to widen that. So hopefully these will look like walkable surfaces up here also. And then, you know, an important part of this is that we've got the water dependent use and and we're not sure what that is and, you know, Henry can speak more to that. And we have hopefully one of the better restaurants in Norwalk here on the water and these two terraces and a few thousand square foot of of park, which is different than Sonar Harborside, for example, there's a reason to get on the edge, but there's no reason to go through. So in terms of the learned behavior, if you know there's a restaurant here and that's that's what you'll try and get to. If you know there's a great park back here, that's what you'll try and get to. So hopefully that adds to the idea of finding a place that they intend to find a place will will pull you through the space. But back to the fire marshal. Adams. He wanted to make sure that his largest truck, which is fifty foot long, made it through. So we had to change the building slightly on the edges. Again, we pulled this in to make twenty foot. We took the trees off in this area. And we made all of the curbs flush in this area. So while you have sidewalks and so on and different paving treatments, they're all flush curbs, which is perfectly safe. You see it all over different cities. But that gets his fifty foot, his largest truck through this area. And then made sure that we also made sure that he can get underneath all of our buildings for minimum of thirteen foot thirteen foot six, and we have that. And then just a general site maneuverability. So it looks like a small changes with significant change for us because knock on effects, but we've I think we've met the intent of what they required for safety. Go back to this.
Stephen, do you want to let Ms. Linkowski? I think she's got a question.
Um, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm only looking at one screen.
No, I can see that. I do. Well, I think the 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 public park in the front is is beautiful and I totally agree with the comments about making it accessible and welcoming. But speaking of accessible and welcoming, is there restricted access to the garage or is there parking for the retail and restaurant in the garage also?
Henry or Adam, you want to do that?
Yeah, there's parking for everything in in the garage. And I think I think, Henry, if you want to talk about the, if you care about the 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 sort of plan, how that will function, he can. But but yes, we accommodate all of the uses with parking.
Okay, and how about the the docks, assuming that they are approved? Will there be any public access docks such as there are over at Sono Seaport if you're trying to share space with them?
By public access dock.
And you join, if you're going to the restaurant or yes, you can just call, make reservation and drive in without renting a dock space permanently.
That would be the plan to have some some usable by the restaurant.
Okay.
Public to be able to go and visit the site, visit the public access park and visit the restaurant and you know, whatever we ended up putting for the water dependent use as well. And furthermore, it's it's a shared parking facility. So it's between the residents, the office. When the office tenants aren't there in the evening or on the weekends, that's when people are coming in and using the parking for the restaurant and for the dock slippage. So we think it's it's very complimentary and the the parking is is meant to be accessible to all the uses of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Henry. What was I here? Alright, so very quickly, sorry I'm going long. Um, two office buildings here in yellow. Now your elevation thirty two, I want to say. I forgot that, right? But you're higher than the nineteen on the deck. So a second level of podiums for the residential courtyard is separated from the public courtyard below. And then you have your residential component and your upper levels of your office. You know, nothing that'll send their repeat up except to say here, the intent is to occupy the roof spaces that we've created. Um, so these show lofts and office space up here. It shows that we have a solar array.
Can you show us the affordable units?
I do. Commissioner, I don't have that diagram. I can, Adam, if well, I can finish. Do you have it? Can you pull it up?
I can look for it. I know it's two three bedroom units and one one bedroom unit. But I can see if I have the designated units. You keep going, Stephen. I'll look for it.
Alright, thank you. I apologize for not having it in my presentation here. A solar ray and a and a green roof and and concealed mechanical spaces up here. This is a good indication of of just the general approach in terms of different levels and connectivity. This is what I meant for when I say you came, you came coming around six, you got an elevation of retail type uses at retail type uses at fourteen. You have the public ask access way at nineteen. You have the residential quarter at thirty four, not thirty two, like I said. Um, and you have the parking that goes underneath all four buildings and then connects to them. And then once you get up, you work yourself, work yourself back down to the boardwalk. So it's essentially up and over.
Stephen, whenever you want me to share, I'll share it.
Um, Commissioner, you you want to see that now or should I finish and then Adam will show you that?
That sounds fine.
Okay. So I'll just finish. I'm almost done. Just on the architecture. These are the residential buildings. So these buildings are inspired by the brick buildings in the surrounding area. The materials here are brick, obviously, and then two different complementary colors. So some of them are not the same. We wanted to keep that streetscape fairly consistent. There's metal spindle panels in the middle. Large glazed openings at the lower level and a somewhat musical sorted structure clad in rubber metal that evokes a factory type building. Yeah.
Stephen, has the facade facing Water Street changed since the last time they saw it?
Um, the facade has changed and it's an apology. We didn't update all the renderings. Um, but the brick detailing has changed. Thank you for reminding me, Adam. The brick detailing has changed to add more visual interest across this element and make it slightly different from the others. And then we added a steel canopy and we've done this in a few projects, including the brick buildings across the Maritime Aquarium, but a steel canopy and that actually appears in this rendering right here. Right there. So hopefully that adds more visual interest to the to the lower edges. You have pedestrian going by and then the brick gate, brick detailing, which is which is pretty detailed if you're looking at it. It's got some.
Originally, it was fairly. Yeah, originally it was fairly flat along the whole facade. So now it's got it's got a bit more variation to it.
Yep. This building is inspired by maritime maritime architectural vernacular materials here, both wood like vertical and shingle cladding. Again, large laser openings at the lower portion. See, we're incorporating elements that remind you of sales. Um, and you go with the entire type of place we're trying to create here and both right across here with the same elements. Um, and then you can imagine this is a restaurant that's sitting out here on a terrace on the water. And then Eric specifically designed these walls. They feel like they're not guarded and they're completely open and feels completely accessible that there's there's no guard rail. So he terraced the stealing his thunder here, but he terraced the landscape down. So it feels entirely permeable in both these edges. Um, then this building. So this this building is intentionally different. Spinnaker was interested in doing what will hopefully become one of the most sought after office locations in Fairfield County. So we imagine this building as a mass timber frame with a glass shell, expansive roof deck and a slope green roof.
Sorry, Stephen, did you say mast timber?
Yeah, the spinakers are hopefully we get to execute, but that you can see we drew it that way.
That's awesome.
It's mast timbered side.
You can't really tell from the or I couldn't tell it from the just the pictures.
Yeah, that was the idea. We've always wanted to do that, do a building like that with Spinnaker and and I think that's the intent right now. Yeah. And that's why it's so glazed to show off the structure. And then once again, large openings, glass opens the bottom, the water dependence use down here, treated the same way as a restaurant. You come out to the an open courtyard and Henry's looking for for tenants as we speak, and maybe it's a canoe rental or whatever it is, but same idea. It feels permeable. It breaks down. There's no barriers. There's no guard rail intentionally designed that way. Um, then Eric will speak a little about about this, but the idea of having a space in Norwalk similar to if you've been out the back of the Maritime Aquarium Court just by the entry, somewhere you can step down and touch the water. There's there's not many places you can do that in Norwalk. Oyster Shell Park is another place you can do that. Hopefully this is one of them.
Would that be like a launch to like? Would that be like a launch hour on a kayak situation? Is that just like a touch? I can't from the picture, it looks like it just walked in.
Just sit, have your lunch, get a sandwich and sit down here and be close to water and be one place in Norwalk you can actually touch the water.
Gotcha.
The public can. All launches and so on will happen from the dock. Um, and then just I'll just finish with these two images. I I showed you this. And this is just inherent beauty of the area that we're in. We're showing it off. Um, and then this final picture of the entire development. That's what I have.
Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you everyone for your time.
Alright, if you let me, I'll try to share the affordable units. But you might get to talk about Stephen. There. Should be up. Are you able to see that?
Can you make it a little larger?
Yes.
Yes, Adam.
I can. Is that good?
Yeah. And which are the affordable units?
So here's one. Here's two.
And what floors are those on? Can you just specify?
Stephen, what is this is about the second floor?
That's the first first residential floor, so second floor, but second floor. Second residential floor, third floor. And third residential floor, fourth floor.
And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sure. With that, and and in case, so that was fifty nine units of housing and and that complies with the two three bedrooms and one single one bedroom. Um, Eric Rains on the landscape.
Yes, thank you, Adam. For the record, Eric Rains, let's see if I can text. Adam, probably if you could, if you could just bring the renderings up, everybody's gotten a good sense, I think, of the layout of the project. So we don't need to really go through that. The renderings capture the direction that we'd like to take the the plant material selections, the paving material selections, and then we have preliminary lighting selections in there as well. Um, and but the the overall design objective is to take advantage of the grade change that we have from the vehicular area between the buildings down to um, down to the new boardwalk. And we've 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 introduced that serpentine walkway, which would in all cases be below the percentage slope that would that would that would qualify it as a ramp. So it's below it's below five percent. So it's not a ramp. Um, and so which means it's very comfortable to walk on. And the spaces in between there are level areas that would for where people could where people could gather and sit on the on the rectangular uh, blocks that we're that we're providing. Uh, we're using the blocks to help control the grade and create those level areas. Uh, so in the end, we wind up with a variety of spaces that, you know, a group of a small or a large group of people could be comfortable or even individuals who might want to be in the in the in the park space, you know, on their own. And at the base of that serpentine, at the end of the lower end of the serpentine, there's a the 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 part of the boardwalk, we've created a larger area with using again the blocks of 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 masonry for seating. And so that could be an entertainment space where, you know, a band or or or, you know, some sort of presentation. So it would be something that could be programmed by the by the building owner Spinnaker uh, that could be a source of entertainment and 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 another reason or another element that could draw people in. Uh, Stephen touched on the steps that that step down to the water there behind it. Um, the goal is to have, you know, as as the as the tide changes, that there would be you would always have a stone that's that's either just at or below the water level. Uh, so they would step down into the water. Um, and you know, Stephen was saying that although if there's any launching, it would happen from from the dock. Um, the the down the center there from the the center access point from Water Street, if you see those those parallel little short lines, that's a lighting element. We were talking about how to make that space more attractive. So we're considering these beams overhead that would have a linear light fixture in them. And the same light fixture would would extend down both sides and actually across the walking surface as well. So you would have um, a series of portals that you would be walking through to get from Water Street into into the into the courtyard. And similar to the use of lighting along the the north and south public access walkways, that rhythm is what is is what would would draw people in. And once they, once they see it and 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 understand, you know, what it is, then it they it would draw them into that space and into that view that Stephen had in the in the last rendering. The plant material as shown in the renderings would all be, you know, perennial grasses, shrubs, seasonal, uh, something that would broaden out the seasonal interest to the greatest extent possible. Of course, largely natives and and then naturally, you know, waterfront, you know, brackish water tolerant. So generally, that's the aesthetics of the of the project, the and as we continue to work with the team and the and the city to make refinements, we'd be happy to um, you know, provide updated drawings as necessary.
If there's no questions for Eric, Matt Schuler from Race Coastal Engineering?
Hi, for the record, Matt Schuler, licensed engineer, uh, working on the waterfront of the property. Um, I'll keep this reached so that I can. Let me share my screen. Okay, so you should be seeing the proposed plan here. Um, I'm going to back up to the uh, existing conditions here and then give everyone a general sense of what planning to do here with the deteriorate waterfront. Uh, there's there's kind of scattered piles and structures along the waterfront. Um, we have a a picture here kind of showing the little condition along the waterfront of the property here. Uh, and then obviously seeing the rendering kind of gives you a better picture of what it's going to look like at the end product. Um, but but here we're proposing a forking slip marina, a burial, varying vessel sizes. Um, ten foot wide public access boardwalk has been touched on several times in this presentation. And and then a a new steel sheet pile bulkhead, although the the bulkhead material may change depending on uh, the aesthetic that the owners are looking for at the site. Um, and and just to show you a couple of section views through what this is going to look like. We're in the preliminary stages of corresponding with deep to get our state application done. Um, again, just an elevation view showing kind of what the current conditions like. Um, and then sections through the existing shoreline showing the deteriorated structures being removed from the site. Uh, and then the public access boardwalk and docks getting put in. These are the the stairs down to the water that was touched down by by Bynum Architecture. Uh, elevation is not set currently. Um, this this kind of modeled to replicate the existing grade. Um, although this may change depending on on the aesthetic that we're looking for here. Uh, to try and get more water inundation in this area. So the public can have more access to the water through the various times of the tide cycle. And that's sort of a quick rundown of what the waterfront aspect of the project is. Like I said, our preliminary discussions with deep, we submitted these plans to deep for their review and we're anticipating getting comments shortly. So so let's let's anyone has any questions on the waterfront aspects of the project, I'll turn this back over to the rest of the team.
The current site right now doesn't have any water slips, correct?
That that's correct. Yeah, but it's it's right now. It's only used for.
It's just used for a parking lot.
Right, right.
Awesome.
Right, um. Uh, Brian Dempsey from DTS on the traffic.
Yeah, okay, share my screen. Good evening. My name is Brian Dempsey. I'm a licensed professional engineer from DTS Providence. We scoped the traffic study with P M C, excuse me. Um, they had a study nine different intersections in the area um, up up to Washington in that area. Just for reference, the site is where the red dot is. And, um, so this will be the site here. Here's Sanford. D M P has reviewed our traffic study and they agreed with our findings and they've asked for and Vince went into some of the items. They would like a new crosswalk here as part of their policy of having crosswalks at every leg of each signalized intersection. They've also asked for a crosswalk up in this area here, a mid block crosswalk that um, the applicant will install. Um, so those are to the.
Mid block crosswalks, awesome. By the way, I'm just saying that my kids go to grit ninja across the way and you're waiting for someone, a kid to get hit on Water Street. So I really appreciate that. That's part of the application here.
They would include.
Agreed, Adam.
They would include R F Bs or rectangular rapid flashing beak. They would include R F Bs or rectangular rapid flashing beacons there also to further, um, provide more visibility for the mid-block crosswalk. Um, so those are some of their suggestions, there's also, uh, as Vince talked about, removal and modifications of some of the traffic signal equipment there now, so that it's, um, the sidewalks are, uh, able to be more walkable, um, so that you don't have the, some of the poles in the way. Um, our study was also reviewed by O S T A, um, who also agreed with their findings. Um, D M P also had us do a shared parking study, um, cause it's one of the things that was discussed before, earlier was about the different uses there, um, when the residents are parking there, uh, there's less office traffic, office people parking, and vice versa. You know, at night, there's very little office, um, parking being utilized. So that's one of the advantages of the shared parking there. The site is also, um, you know, it's basically three blocks to the train station, so it's an easy walk. There are bus routes along, uh, Water Street, there are also bike lanes and there are sidewalks. You know, there's a good sidewalk system on both sides. So, you know, people, um, at the office have various opportunities to walk to different places for lunch, for dinner and such, and other people here will have the opportunity to walk to the restaurant and other services that are gonna be provided at the site. Um, the, um, so, right now, we're, we're just, um, working out some of the final details with T M P with the signal equipment. Um, and then we'll have our final approval from O S T A, um, when the, this process is reviewed, finished with this, with the city. Um, are there any questions on the traffic?
All right, um, thanks, Brian. So, all right, if I can, I've, I've got a couple of things to say and then we'll wrap up, uh, the, the, uh, all right, um, so, um, I want to talk just about a couple, a couple of last points, uh, so one is, which has come up in a, a bunch of different contexts, but I want to try to wrap it all together about, um, we're in the, the, the construction we're proposing is in the A E zone and about construction in the A E zone and dry, and dry, what I want to say is dry egress, which has come up uh, a few times, and want to first just talk about what the law is on that. The Coastal Area Management Act, uh, that, and that's what DEEP, um, provides their comments, uh, on. Uh, there's no requirement in the Coastal Management Act for dry egress. It's not, that's not a requirement in the statutory framework for CAM. Uh, there's no prohibition or restriction on construction within the A E flood zone under the Coastal Area Management Act, that includes multifamily construction. Um, the, the, the marine commercial zone, which is where we're in, and I've sort of circled here the two areas where the marine commercial zone exists in, uh, Norwalk. Um, and that's what you're here to enforce, your regulations for the marine commercial zone. Uh, in that zone, you explicitly permit multifamily development, and you actually only allow development of one unit for every two thousand square feet of land. So, in the C D four, the dark purple on the other side of Water Street, right, right across the street from us, you get one residential unit for every five hundred feet of land. So you've made a policy decision to allow multifamily, but it's literally four times less dense than the other side of Water Street. Because you've wanted to limit the housing in the marine commercial zone to literally twenty-five percent of what's allowed in the C D four. Um, all of the parcels in this zone, in the sea, in the marine commercial zone, they're all in the hundred-year flood zone. Every one of them, and again, you explicitly have for forty years allowed residential development in that zone. Um, the, um, the, as a result, because obviously all of the properties are in the flood zone and they all are serviced by a roadway in the flood zone, your regs don't, um, require there to be a, a road directly abutting that's outside of the flood zone, in fact, this is from your marine commercial zoning reg for lot building site access, you have to have access to a street via driveway easement or alley, we do. Multifamily development, which we are, proposed within the flood hazard overlay zone, which we are, must have a dem, a route for emergency access into the building and safe pedestrian egress to a public street within the hundred-year flood zone, and of course, it's within the hundred-year, cause there are no streets outside the hundred-year flood zone. Multifamily development with ten or more units proposed within the flood hazard overlay zone must provide a written evacuation plan. We very clearly meet those requirements, that's what your regulations require you to enforce. We, we a hundred percent meet that, um, the, um, the, and actually, let me, before I get to that next slide, um, so, and in this case, the Water Street flooding is generally pretty predictable. Um, with the tides and with, with storms, uh, there's ample advance warning when there's a large storm or tide coming in, we have a written evacuation plan. We're proposing a building that meets the FEMA standards for the A E zone, which is twelve feet. It also meets Norwalk standards, which says you can't just go twelve feet, you've got to go to fourteen feet, you've got to be two feet higher. And then where you get to the habitable space where, where people are gonna live, where the residential units are, you heard we're at nineteen feet above base flood elevation. So we're seven feet above what FEMA actually requires for this zone for where the residential uses are, and five feet above what Norwalk requires. So it's very unlikely that flooding is ever gonna get that high into those residential units. And we've also specifically placed all of the residential units as far from the waterfront as possible, they're all up at Water Street, not down at the water. Um, on top of that, we're building, uh, a structure that's contemplated to be able to be modified if the city raises Water Street and easily connected to an elevated Water Street. We've also agreed to fund, uh, and, and the city's implementation of that backflow preventer that you heard about, which again will help reduce flooding. Finally, we've designed, uh, that area of dispersal, which Sealan talked about in the event of a flood and a fire for, for resident safety, although again, that's not required. Um, and, and that, that would be in the unlikely event that, that residents can't, can't get out to the, the public street. Um, none of that is required under the applicable regulations. So we really could have done essentially nothing and complied with your regulations uh, for, related to egress and flood compliance, but I think they've, we voluntarily um, undertaken a litany of other improvements and obligations. Um, and it's really all, it's, it's, it's as much as a property owner can actually do. Um, and you know, I guess we're on the sort of water side of Water Street, so this issues come up on this application. But the concerns that are raised related to housing units in the hundred-year flood plain, which again, that's the A E zone. Um, that's huge swaths of downtown Norwalk and East Norwalk and Rowayton, all located in the A E zone, all in that flood plain, and virtually all of them are serviced by a public street that's also located in the flood plain, you saw Vince's like, you know, uh, color graphic that, that most of the neighboring areas all in the flood plain. Um, we have this exhibit here, and I can try to zoom in, so you can maybe see it a little better. So this light blue is the A E zone. And you're looking at just in South Norwalk, the A E zone covers quite a bit more of Norwalk. But in South Norwalk here, you know, these we've kind of highlighted for you fairly recent developments that have either been constructed or approved. Uh, uh, and this is us is here, one oh eight Water. All in the A E flood zone, all served by streets in the flood zone. Uh, same as, same as us, it's really no different, um, and, and by the way, all of them at four times the density that, that we're proposing, uh, on our, on our side of the street. Um, we're not asking for a zone change, we're not asking for extra density, we're not filing a special permit. Everything is as of right, we, we fully comply with those commercial zone regulations. Um, and, and we, so that, that was one point. Um, the, the final point that I have is, um, just on your, uh, get out of that view. On, uh, is on the, on the CAM side as well, the, historically, this site, I mean, it, it historically, like way back, was a material storage distribution yard. Um, obviously, it's been eight, about eighty-eight percent of the site is boat storage, uh, with boats being brought in from offsite, it's not a water-dependent use. Um, the, um, there's no boat slips, there's no public access, the, um, there's no green area, there's no formal drainage systems in place, uh, for runoff and discharge. Um, where you heard all of the sort of, uh, improvements from Vince about impervious coverage, uh, infiltration. Um, ninety, seventy percent of the site area runoff is gonna be treated, currently none is. Um, that, of course, is important for your coastal air, area management analysis. Although the boat storage is obviously no longer contemplated for the property, the development plans include substantial space for water-dependent use. We're seeking the maximum number of boat slips that DEEP will permit us, given the waterfrontage and width of the harbor uh, at that frontage, which again is fourteen slips. Um, we're providing a boardwalk, multiple means of public access from the street, uh, for, not just for residents, but, but for residents of all Norwalk to access the waterfront. Um, we're providing, uh, additional, uh, public realm area, uh, which allows for meaningful public access and the, the, the water-dependent use, um, that, uh, Henry has talked with from kayaks and, uh, fishing charters to oyster hatchery and marine educational facilities, um, uh, to try to line, uh, up a tenant, we don't have that finalized, uh, yet, but it's a very active, uh, process for that water-dependent user, uh, in the bottom of that, uh, office building. And so, um, so while we are displacing an existing water-dependent use, I think we more than make up for it with those various, uh, water-dependent uses and other amenities, uh, that will be, uh, provided. Uh, and I think it's a net benefit to the, the community, uh, and the waterfront, and it's aligned with the goals and the policies of the Coastal Management Act. Um, with that, uh, I know it's been a while, so I will, uh, uh, stop sharing and we'll take any last questions you have before letting you turn it over to the public. Steve, I, I don't know if it's me, am I right to call you or not?
I have a question, but I figured I would let the, the Sealan bails it first. Can someone on your team speak to, um, and, and I, I agree, you know, boat storage is not the best use of, of land, especially next to the water, but that site currently also utilized by, uh, Gary Wetmore, who's a very vital um, individual in terms of the pilings and the dock repair and the services he offers. I know he, you know, was, is on that site and he, you know, I, Amelia Williams, I apologize for, if you can hear the dog barking in the background. Um, but I knew Amelia Williams and I had a pretty in-depth conversation with him about that. I was wondering if they're, what the plans are for, for Mr. Wetmore and, you know, what can be done on that front.
Adam, I can talk about that. Right, um, so we've had a number of meetings with Gary. Um, ultimately, in the final configuration, there won't be space for him on the site. As you can see, that's all, where he, where he does the majority of his dock building is in the last ten percent of the site, which really is the public access area. What we have talked about with him is to maintain him, his business on the site for as long as we possibly can, one, that's through the approval process, construction documentation, putting the financing together, actually getting permits, which is a six to eight month long process on its own. Additionally, we want to be able to allow him to maintain his operation during the construction activity as long as we can, we've had conversations with the Southern property owner Bobby Blue, that even when we start construction, he may be, be able to still, he will, if Bobby agrees to it, and they're close friends, he'd be able to access the backside of the site while we're doing construction in the front of the site. Um, via Bobby's property, which, which abut ours, and if there's a, he has some material there, but he can move it out of the way and they could kind of have some vehi- vehicular access around the site. Um, I've personally reached out to different property owners in the area trying to find him a location, I know he, at least what he's told me is that he had intended to retire at a certain point, um, whether that's five or seven years, I'm not sure, hopefully we can buy him a, a year or two more on the site. Um, he does own a property to the south, I know, uh, I, I'm forgetting what the name of it is, but it's the, the former, uh, oyster house three-story building right on Water Street. And I, I think he's in talks with his partner to be able to relocate that barge to that property.
Just in our conversation with Gary, sorry to jump in-
One thirty-two Water Street.
Yeah, one thirty-two Water Street, Gary did identify that he is, um, he did look into it, and it's not a feasible site unfortunately for his operation, given the bathymetry and the materials and things that he brings in in the barges, he wouldn't be able to use one thirty-two water site to continue his operations right now.
So I, yeah. I'm not sure why that is, the, I'm looking at it on the map, there seems to be a, a substantial enough area there, but that's for him and whoever's partner in, in the property to make a determination. Um, so what I can say is, we're, I'm actively calling around trying to find out a location for him, uh, you know, an example is I called the Manry Silent folks, I said, during this time period, do you think that you could accommodate that? The, a, a business like that, because they have a long construction timeline. I think they're thinking about it, but we haven't secured a location for him. Ultimately, he will have to, to put effort into finding out where he's going to move his facility to. But we're trying our best to work with him and accommodate him for as long as we can.
Hey, are there any other questions, or are we ready to move on to the public sharing portion?
Just a quick question, if staff had any other, uh, comments on this?
Well, I can hold-
Okay.
I can hold for, if you have, something comes up during your discussions later.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, uh, uh, we will move on to the-
Anna has a question.
Okay. Anna?
We can't hear you, Anna.
Looks like you're blocking the light out of your eyes, Anna.
I'm, I'm double, you know-
There we go.
I'm double muted, and I'm on stage without my stage makeup. Um, I know at the very beginning of this, the applicant spoke to the memo that gives a little bit of history of the zoning here, but I just wanted to clarify, in September of twenty twenty-three, when we adopted the marine industrial commercial study, whatever, there was into the P O C D. According to my notes and reviewing minutes, there was a decision made to, um, adopt it with the exception that quote rezoning of the Water Street M C zone should be reconsidered only after we've figured out a solution for the flooding on Water Street, i.e. probably raising the street. So I just wanted to confirm that the zoning rules that are, that this project is attempting to comply with are, are not, are whatever existed previously, that we did not rezone. We put off the rezoning of this area in September twenty twenty-three until there was an appropriate solution, and that appropriate solution has not come. Am I correct?
Yes, that, and, and I'm really glad you brought that up, because I, I saw some public comments where people had stated we had rezoned this and, you know, we're incentivizing different developments, that's an absolutely false statement. Uh, you recall that when we, you know, A, did the study for the area and B, did the broader rezoning in twenty twenty-four, we purposely did not rezone Water Street, the marine commercial portion of it, in response to conversations we had with DEEP about increasing density in that area without providing that dry egress, so we did not do that, we kept our word on that. Um, this project is coming in under the code that's, as Brian pointed out, had been on the books for a very long time in terms of the height and density, so this is something they could have requested two years ago, three years ago, so now that, that, your statement is correct.
Okay. And, uh, DEEP had raised at the time concerns about us adding more residential des- des- destiny, um, density without dry egress and all the floods. Um, and that's one reason why we didn't rezone it, or we put in a provision that it won't be rezoned until there's a fix. And now, even though we haven't changed anything, they've still got essentially the same con- concerns, am I correct?
Yeah, I, I think that's, you know, DEEP is always, you know, raises the question about having any density, whether it was single-family or multifamily within a flood zone, that, that's a pretty consistent comment that they raise, even on your basic CAM applications.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so now we'll- Okay, so now we'll move on to the public portion, the public hearing portion of this. As usual, we will have give people an opportunity to speak, one opportunity to speak. So say everything that you feel is important to you to say in your one opportunity, because you won't be able to speak again. But of course, it's not in your interest to just go on and on and on because you sort of lose our attention if you do that and it's hard to really focus on the need of what your what your testaboni is. So that having been said, and give us your name and your address when you are called on. That having been said, Brian, can you bring people over?
Sure. So for anyone from the public, if you'd like to speak, you can use the razor hand tool to the bottom of your screen. You click that once. If you're dialing on a phone, you hit star nine. And with that, Diane Loricella.
Good evening, Chair Wells, Planning and Zoning Commissioners, applicants and staff. For the record, my name is Diane Loricella, twenty-one Little Fox Lane. I first wanted to say when I heard about this development, I wa- I was and still am quite interested in how to develop along Water Street. I was one of the first groups of harbor commissioners under then Mayor Bill Collins. I helped found the Harbor Commission Plan back in the eighties. And over time, I have commented on different and various developments on both sides of the harbor. Up the river, the industrial, did a lot of commenting on the industrial study that was done and many of the other studies done by redevelopment and planning and zoning over the years, most recently. One thing that always struck me is how Norwalk with its wonderful harbor had been reluctant for certain kinds of development, even on Veterans Park. And that discussion was back and forth, fades and the like. Another thing that strikes me is the fact that on Water Street, over the years, there had been various discussions, even in the eighties and nineties, to elevate the entire street because it floods, hence the name. And as we know, there was regular flooding just when the moon, the different stages of the moon. And then, of course, in addition, when there is any kind of extreme weather, we've seen this. So the reason I'm I'm talking about this, I also did walk up and down Water Street with this people from Circa when they were looking at and the people from, I think it was the the Nature Conservancy and others were developing different ways to look at resiliency in that area and how can people escape in case of a hurricane, et cetera. So with that, I did also listen to Mr. Blank and Attorney Blank and his experts speaking about the different methods and measures they're using to conform with the the regulations and to allow for public access as well as marine or water-based use. I will say that I was somewhat surprised that the Harbor Commission approved this without a lot of not pushback, but conditions or enough conditions so that we could have guaranteed Gary Wetmore spot. I just heard all of the efforts that are being made, and that is just part of life when we have, you know, private property and development. I will say that I believe that this particular project, which I am not opposed to in total, is too densely developed, especially in the fact that it is in the flood zone. And extreme weather is not an if, but it happened, it's happening and it's going to continue to happen. So while I did hear some of the explanations about the density, the reduction of the number of residential units and D E E P's concern about putting bodies or people that are there around the clock within that flood zone, Mr. Blank, Attorney Blank did talk about that. I would like to ask that this commission and you, I know you intend to discuss this and not vote tonight, I believe. I would like to see if you feel after D E E P's comments that you should hire a an expert that can ascertain whether the applicant's experts are looking at facts and whether they agree with those facts. Now, I don't know if that's been done. I don't think so. Again, I'm not opposed to this site being developed. I just think that it is being as as some of Spinnaker's projects go, they develop them to the max. And it's not always good because Norwalk's infrastructure with sewers and storm sewers are having trouble, beginning to have trouble or currently have trouble in that area. So because of that, I I feel that you should not send this back or vote no and send it, you know, back to the drawing board. I just think you, your commissioners, you as commissioners should make sure you have the best from Circa, which is a neutral party, deep, a neutral party, and others that could help you decide whether this is too dense and whether it's going to strain our already strained storm sewers and other utilities, including our sanitary sewer. I will say this, that if a condition of the permit is that this applicant, which I think they said that they would install and pay for backflow prevention, which is something when I was on the mayor's water quality committee, we talked about that for Water Street. So that would be a huge plus. I want to make sure that if this eventually gets an approval, that this is embedded, cemented in and that there's something in writing that this particular applicant will do this. It is a good thing that the city should have made happen over the years, especially with the Biden infrastructure that was supposed to happen years ago. D P W looked at elevating all of Water Street, and as soon as they started digging, they hit oil from one of the old, I think Petro or one of the old oil tank farms, they stopped instead of making that company do a cleanup, the owners of the site do a cleanup, and then we could have had an elevated street. And that is decades ago. So with that, I thank you for listening to me. I do think that we should make sure that we are not overbuilding on the site. I'm not opposed to them building on the site. I think it's way over the top as a former harbor commissioner who would like some development along the coast of Veterans Park for restaurants and the like, and on this side.
And I cut out there at the end, Diane, but I think you were you were pretty much wrapping up. Next, we have Lynell Jones.
Hello, my name is Lynell Jones. My address is Ten Point Road. Over the weekend, I sent Norwalk customer service an email with an attachment and asked that it be forwarded to all of you before this meeting. Thank you for your questions about public health and safety. As pointed out by deep, this application is not in compliance with the Connecticut Coastal Area Management Act. This plan puts human ri- lives at risk. Putting property at risk is one thing. Redefining public water dependent uses is one thing. Guaranteeing lives will be in danger is quite another thing. Deep included three attachments, the coastal area fact sheet, the dry egress fact sheet and pages of photos of what is referred to as a Connecticut Shared Risk Zone. The applicant has neither mentioned nor addressed what the shared risk zone means, which is what it sounds like. Hundred and eight Water Street is a Connecticut deep in Circa Shared Risk Zone. This commission knows that Circa and the consultant ACOM came to Norwalk uninvited at no expense to Norwalk taxpayers. This commission knows Circa advises, warns that it is you who make the decisions, waterward of the Connecticut, of the coastal jurisdiction line. This commission knows years ago, a recommend recommendation was made to raise Water Street, and there are absolutely no plans or funds available for raising a road with significant sewage infrastructure. This commission knows no system works under three plus feet of water. It's called Water Street because it regularly floods. When I spoke and wrote wrote to you before, I was wrong when I said one foot of moving water could topple a person and three feet of moving water could control a car. The guideline following the Texas floods is now six inches of moving water can topple a person and one foot of moving water can control a car. How many residents who are today at risk with limited evacuation routes know this? Who are you really serving if you approve this? Thank you, and please think of the public trust.
Okay, next, we have John Palladino.
Hi, everybody. My name is John Palladino. I am one of the three owners with my brother Tom and Victor of the now S and D Auto Repair Shop, the little shop, you know, that could for a last number of years. I kind of reiterate reiterated what people have talked about previously, you know, about the we've all seen the storm drains. We've talked about previously about elevation of Water Street. I I have never been one against development, which I think for the most part, everybody has thought out clearly in presentation, you know, for the development. Has really been top notch the top, the the couple of times that I've been involved in your meetings. I I had one one specific question about runoff is runoff, being being lower than higher usually doesn't result in 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 good things. We we've seen the corner of Hanford Place. That's where one oh seven Water Street is. We've seen the development behind it. I wouldn't say that it affected the property one way or the other. So I truly believe the development at one oh eight could have more positive effect due to runoff than the hard pan, which is currently across the street. All that being said, I'm I'm not one to negate progress if I think people are doing their due diligence, which I think everyone is here in the presentation and the questions asked by the board. I have one point I wanted to make, and I actually did email Steve not too long ago. I I the discussion was about the center walkway. And I I it just doesn't make sense to me in that you your crosswalk is right at the corner. You're inviting people through the crosswalk, which is wonderful. But you have nothing but stairs in front of you from that sidewalk access. And I know different elevations are really, really critical in in the planning. Yet the sidewalk ways, if I'm coming from Sono Seafood and I'm on that side of the street, I'm not walking to the center of the building to access the shoreline. If I come from Sono Seafood, human nature, oh, there's the driveway, there's the walkway. Now I'm involved with, you know, possibly exiting traffic. And I see the center walkway as something I'd seriously consider a redesign of because I just don't see people in the normal situ- even if I walk down Hanford Place and I know the access is to the left and you've created a nice walking loop. And that's just my, you know, two cents on that, but I more or less wanted to just chime in and and say that I think people within their restrictions, within the departments, are doing what they can do. And we still want to protect our piece of property, which, you know, if a school bus goes by and the and the tide is up, and yes, I agree, the town has been wonderful coming to empty out the storm drains. But it is it is a hazard on Water Street when you can't make a left-hand turn or once a month, you probably run into sawhorses. And I think that's something should be priority with any developer coming in. Regardless of what they say, it's not going to impact the school system. It's not going to impact traffic. That's no reason to stop a project. So you have a company here with a developer that is talking about helping somewhere on Water Street is a start. So kudos to everybody. I I think, you know, I think you're heading in the right direction and just cautiously dot the i's on it, but get rid of that center sidewalk. Nobody will use it except gate borders. That's all. Thank you.
And if anyone else would like to speak, please use the razor hand tool to the bottom of your screen. You'd click that once. If you're dialing on a phone, you'd hit star nine. Seeing nothing further, Ms. Wells. And you're muted.
Well, thank you very much. Okay. Good. Well, since that's it, I think we'll close the public hearing. Steve, could you?
I think.
Yeah.
Can we just have an opportunity to just respond to a couple of those comments, Ms. Wells?
Yes, of course. You have a you have an opportunity. I just wanted to ask Steve before you respond to those comments, whether he knows anything about the plans to raise Water Street.
Yes, there's there's no definite plan. Ms. Jones was correct about that. However, we do have a grant application pending. Hopefully, we'll hear soon from the state about that. We had got some funds previously for a different purpose, and then we also got a second grant that was going to do the same thing. So we're working with deep now to kind of repurpose that and hopefully look at dry access routes throughout Water Street and other points in South Norwalk. So we're optimistic. We can hopefully look at that next year, you know, pending receipt of the funding.
Wonderful. Okay, Attorney Blank.
Thank you. So I think Ms. Loricella and Ms. Jones had a similar themed comments. I'll try to address them jointly here. What a concern was that it's a too densely developed project. I think in large part, we sort of made our pitch to you already with respect to that, and I'm I'm not going to rehash that, but I will. I will say that what's notable is in the if in the deep comments, they actually don't didn't take any issue with the size, scale, scope, density of the development in general. They take an issue with any residential units in a flood zone. And that was their issue, but they didn't. They didn't say, oh, you've got too big of an office building. Oh, you've got too much retail. We don't like the restaurant. It wasn't the size or the bulk or the height or any of that. It was residential development in a flood zone. So I don't think that the density is the the scale of it is is out of line according to deep. Obviously, the density, your zoning sets the density at one to two thousand for the water side of Water Street, which we very clearly fall within. You don't need outside experts to tell you that we 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 meet that requirement. The 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 shared zones of risk or the zones of shared risk, those are areas where there's common flood, wind or heat related challenges. And Circa did determine that Water Street, as well as the 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 rest of the neighborhood are in those zone, those zones of shared risk for those factors of flood, wind or heat related challenges. Now, of course, with this application, we are proposing to not eliminate flooding. You heard that, but but to alleviate to some respects flooding both by the onsite stormwater controls and the backflow preventer as well as both, and this relates to the heat related challenges as well by finally adding some green to the site with the green roofs, the landscaping, all of which doesn't currently exist. So we're going to improve that. We're not making that worse. The 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 center pathway, I do think it's a positive. I look, we we. I, look, we, we, I think we heard the comments loud and clear that we need to do a really good job with the signage package, uh, and, and likely make some, um, either whether it's the patterns in the pavers or, uh, other a- artistic sort of endeavors to make all of the entrance ways to the, to the water uh, more clear and inviting to the public. But I think we've, we've already done that in some respects, particularly for lighting. Um, and so, so I think that center pathway will be, uh, really well-used once we're, we're up and running. And of course, the development team here, uh, you know, Spinnaker, I think, hopes to be doing developments in Norwalk for the next hundred years. And, um, so it's sort of not their incentive to pull the wool over your eyes because maybe they win one, but they lose the war on that. And so that's, that's never been their game, and they've got a proven track record, I think, in Norwalk. Um, I think, Henry, I don't know if any, if, if I've, if I've missed anything, um, before we close.
No, I think, I think you covered it all very nicely, Adam. And, and we, we think that we have a really, uh, exciting opportunity here, not only to, I mean, we didn't talk much about this, but providing residential, providing office space in Norwalk, uh, really exciting office space, which I think is something that hasn't been developed in the area in a long time. And I, I've always thought that it is a, uh, that creates a dynamic community and neighborhood if you, if you mix not only residential, but different uses together and offices. Um, something that gets talked about a lot right now as there being vacancy. But in the, in the data that we've looked through, um, and our studies, Class A office space, really unique office space, like we're, what we are proposing here is in immensely high demand. Um, we think could invite really great businesses to operate in Norwalk and could be a great economic benefit to the community in people that spend money who may, may be from Norwalk, maybe from out of Norwalk, but are also coming here and living and working. Um, and so, and, and finally, I, I always think about this when we're talking about this project. The, if you ever have seen the Manresa presentation, they show how accessible waterfront is not only in Norwalk, but all of Fairfield County, and it's like, there's almost nothing that's available. And I think this is a really unique opportunity to, to invite the neighborhood in to, to touch and feel the waterfront. And we're really excited about being a part of that.
Unless there's any other questions, we thank you for your time this evening.
Before we proceed, uh, we will seat Diana on this matter. Um, does anybody have any further questions for Atreyan Blank?
I have a question for Steve, should I ask it now, or?
Sure.
Steve, I know sewage was brought up in some of the public questions, can you hit that if that's actually what, what's going on there?
Yeah, that's not, there, there's no capacity issue at the plant. The last time I looked at it, uh, checking with WPCA, there's not even close.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, Hannah?
Um, hi. I'm not sure who this question is for.
I'm not sure, Hannah, but.
Hold on.
Yeah, if you're not seated, I don't think at this point you can ask any questions.
Well, I can't talk anymore. Oh.
Sorry.
Does anybody else have any, any questions for Atreyan Blank? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, good. Uh, Brian or Steve, do you have a, the resolution you can bring up?
Yeah, I'll pull up draft. And then I just want to point out some things. So we had originally sent some language and then had received comments, um, from TMP and DPW that we wanted to make sure that we included in case, uh, you do approve the application. Um, so some of the language, uh, was modified based on that. So you'll see some crossouts, that was language that was originally included and sent to you. Um, and then highlighted language is what, uh, the not crossed out was what was revised, um, in its place. So the first, um, item was an easement agreement would be filed on the Nor- Norwalk Land Records detailing the public access. Um, so speaking with TMP, the request is really that that be specified for the frontage along Water Street, where they would need to have a wider sidewalk to hit the five-foot minimum requirement. Um, so the applicants agreed to that. And then as part of that, they've, uh, applicants agreed that the areas labeled as public on the plans would, uh, remain, remain open to the public from at least dawn to dusk, um, while the site plan approval remains effective. Um, so essentially, as long as this building exists, um, the public have access to, uh, the boardwalk and the park in the back. Um, in speaking with, uh, DPW and the applicant, they wanted some more clarif- clarifying language about the duck bill backflow preventer that would be installed. Uh, so we included language, uh, I guess there's, there's kind of two things for you guys to consider here. Um, the, the first is that we separated out, uh, that the applicant would agree to pay for the design and installation of the, of the preventer. And then, uh, DPW had asked for some additional language that when it comes time for that, that the city would have to ultimately go to, uh, deep and potentially the Department of Transportation to get permits to do so. And they wanted the applicant to, uh, assist in paying for hiring the consultant and, and the work that goes into that. Um, so I had crossed that off because instead of having eight that the applicant had asked that it be ten, which essentially just merges all of that language together into one condition. So the applicant, when it comes time for the installation of the, the duck bill backflow preventer that the applicants agreed to install, hire the consultant, um, and, and all of that necessary.
To restart, really quick, Brian, ten is inclusive of eight, so we.
Yeah, so, so ten is inclusive of items eight and nine. So if you're okay with the language in ten, we would delete out eight and nine.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, and then eleven is the, the conditions that TMP had listed in their memo. Um, again, the applicant, uh, I believe, agreed to essentially all of them. So that included relocating, um, signals, uh, widening, having the easement for the sidewalk, uh, installing, uh, curb ramps and pavement markings for that mid-block crosswalk, uh, a little bit north of the site on Water Street. Um, and then just updates to the driveway aprons and, uh, light pole specs.
And that includes the mid-block, right?
Yeah, that's included indeed, yeah.
Awesome.
Um, but I did want to add in here, um, as I was thinking about it, is I wanted the documentation to be provided prior to the issuance of a zoning permit. Um, so we're not issuing permits without an agreement in place. Everything else included is relatively boilerplate that you typically see.
Hey, are there any, uh, further comments from the mission?
So first, I guess I'd ask if you guys are okay with item four being deleted, since it's included essentially in five and six.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, me too.
You say it so.
And then now that I messed up the numbers, um, it would be, uh, that ten would, if you'd want to keep ten and then delete, it would be six and eight, or if you'd want to have seven and eight stay in place. And I'll uncross this off for you so that you can read.
Why would we want seven and eight in place?
It's just, it, yeah, ten just merges the, the two of seven and eight together.
Okay, so we don't lose anything by having eight versus ten, ten. I'd like another, a couple more tens, though, if we can.
Yeah, if it's redundant, there's no point.
Just to say back to you, Brian, it's redundant, right?
It is redundant, it is redundant.
So.
Yeah, I don't know why.
Seven, eight, and keep ten.
Make sure I'm not missing anything up as I'm doing this. Um, and then seven didn't really have any changes, other than hopefully you agree with, um, what's written. And then if you're all okay with that, just need you guys to make sure that the, whoever made the motion is okay with that and whoever seconded is okay with the updates.
Made the motion, I'm okay with it. Oh, sorry, Jim.
Yeah, before, do we want to add an additional condition about working with staff on a new, like, center walkway and any of the, the redesign there? I, I don't know if that was captured by one of these conditions or.
That was not, no, that was not considered.
Yeah, I, I would recommend if you go that route, that it work with staff, but then get approved by the commission at some point in time.
Okay.
Is there anything in your?
Oh, I'm sorry, is there any recitation here about water-dependent use?
Right. Um, not, um, other than what's reflected on their architectural plans as having that space um, in the rear building listed as water-related use. Um, and then, um, the, the public access, so we could, uh, but we could add language if, if you feel comfortable, um, or if that would, um, help with that.
To have a recitation that there is water-dependent use.
Okay.
And Diana, do you have a question or?
Well, my, my comment, Galen, was very much in keeping with yours. And I think we need to strengthen the requirement for water-related use. And I wonder if we can include something about how they will continue to try to find a replacement for what is really a critical water-dependent use, it's being displaced by this project.
That might be, it's hard to do that as a condition related to this, but I would say definitely put that into the, um, kind of a clause at, before the condition, but I, I, I a hundred percent agree with the, what you're saying. But I, I don't know if you could make that a specific condition of the application.
Yeah, I, I think that would more of an instinct.
I would just hope that we could refer to it somehow in this condition, at, in, in this, uh, approval without it being a condition, I agree.
Yeah, we can, we can add a clause at the beginning of this, that, that, and once we get the conditions wrapped up, circle back. I, I think, um, kind of, I, you know, I'm just thinking about the, and I'm sorry, I'm going off on a little bit of a tangent with this. But it's, to me, this is a, this development's really interesting from a zoning perspective and from a planning perspective, because we've done a couple of studies on the waterfront now. What, what is it kind of, what's the vision for the area in the future? And as I mentioned earlier, Amelia and I had a really interesting conversation with Gary Wetmore, kind of like what, what is the, what does he see for the future of the area in terms of viability of, of true marine uses? And I, I don't, I don't know if there necessarily is that in terms of like a fishing industry or something along what you might think of more as, uh, traditional things. It's, but I don't want to get to a point where we exclude that or make it difficult for those. But again, a lot of these uses that we see along the water today, you know, most of them don't allow access to the water at all. And allowing access to the water is kind of a common theme that we see in all the planning studies that we do in terms of anything related to the water. I mean, the boat clubs, while they have, uh, you know, they're great if you're a member of the boat club, they're, you know, they're a hundred percent impervious surface and there's no public access there. So that's, that's something that we need to think about. But on this project, at least, there, there is that ability to get at the public access, provided, I think it could be enhanced beyond what they've, um, shown us to date. Um, I'd like to revisit that as much as we can going forward. But I think that's something to think about in terms of the, the vision. Are, are you kind of setting the tone of what the, this section of Water Street could look like going forward?
I think that's very important, but I also think it's important to make note of the fact that we are displacing a current very viable water-dependent use. And all the things you said about the po- project that are positive are, are true. I mean, it's, it's a wonderful waterfront access, but I would like to mention that somewhere in here that we, we realize we are displacing a critical waterfront, uh, use and hope that they will continue to actively pursue options for the current, um, operator.
Yes, and Brian, maybe when you finish up with that, what your thought is there, then we could go up and add a, um, like a finding at the beginning of this, that this, the, uh, something along the, and then happy maybe to work, um, with ours, with the city, whether it's through us or Economic Development Office, to try to assist in finding a permanent home for, uh, Mr. Wetmore.
Sure. Um, before we do that, I don't, I don't want to lose my train of thought. Ga- Galen, can you go over again the, kind of like architecture, the public walkway revisions that we're kind of getting at? Um, you said you kind of wanted them to work with staff to submit some sort of revised plan for the.
And lighting. And what else? To make the public access clear to the public and inviting?
Yeah, I would agree, I'd say as wide as possible.
As wide as possible.
Sidewalk treatments.
And invite, and inviting.
There also was, uh, no handrail apparent that I could see. And you're certainly going to want a handrail, uh, on, uh, uh, steps that are that long.
Yeah, I totally agree. Cause I can go up steps with a handrail, but not without a handrail. Just personally, just as, as one member of the public.
All public access should be, I don't know, ADA compliant?
Well, some of it.
No, no, you don't want to say that because you have different access points to have that. So you have the two ADA compliance on the sides and the middle one. But not, I, I don't think we need to make the full thing ADA compliant.
Understandable.
Yeah, because you couldn't possibly make that.
I think.
It could be an escalator.
Right, and the building code will require a handrail, so that will take care of that. More than four risers.
What, increase the wayfinding, uh, to improve wayfinding, something like that? I'm impressed with your ability to type while we talk. Um, Steve, I think you had mentioned before wanting this to be something that, um, comes back to us. I'm, I'm okay with doing that, but if you guys are also comfortable handling this discussion and, you know, and then can decide whether or not it's worth coming back to us, I'm, I'm happy to leave that requirement out of this condition. Um, do you have a preference as to whether you want us to review the, the change here?
I'll, um, it's your call, I, I, I mean, I'm comfortable doing it, but I'm, you know, with, working with staff. Um, but if you'd like to be involved, you, you know, I would definitely encourage that as well.
Yeah, and I know you've helped strongly about this.
Yeah, I think it's more flexible to leave it with staff.
Okay.
Because people can have numerous meetings with staff who really work through problems.
Yep.
Whereas they can't do that with a full commission.
Sure, I appreciate that, and, uh, Steve and team, if, uh, if you need us, let us know.
All right, and then.
Is there anything we could put in to address the possibility of subsidence?
What do you mean by subsidence?
Well, given that it's right on the water, in the event that there is a hurricane or extreme weather event, then that could accelerate the loosening of the soil or subsidence. So then, which could, uh, pose structural issues to the, to the site. But that's a whole other rabbit hole we, we could go down.
Yeah, I wish we could have asked the engineer more about that. I, I saw the steel pilings they were talking about, but hadn't landed on that as a final.
I don't think that's an issue with this. With this site that's engineered like, like this, I hope.
Is that something deep will evaluate as part of the permitting? Is that something Deep will evaluate as part of the permitting process for the slips and the waterfront?
I think more likely Building Department.
Building Department, okay.
Yeah, yeah, Building Department who has jurisdiction over, um, retaining walls and then any, if, if anything has to get installed. C word of the coastal jurisdiction line, um, so if any, um, sea walls need reconstructing, then D E P will review those as well.
Okay.
Is, so would there be like a? An inspection down the line, let's say like five years or five to 10 years?
I, I see where you're going shape and I, um. Yeah, I remember there was that building in Florida that had the decay and then ultimately there was, that was like a few years ago, there was a collapse. Um, I think, I don't know if I would, uh, that's a good point. I'm just trying to think. Putting that in the context of a condition or. Another clause like up here, because it is technically, that's a building code issue, not the zoning one, but.
And we could just punt it to.
There's no downside to put it as a finding of just the consideration, it's not.
Yeah.
Binding or anything like that, it's just. You know. Very different built environments, so.
He could say something like, uh, the commission, commission acknowledges the, um. The. Got to use the words very carefully, they, the, this environment in which the development is proposed. And advises that all precautions are undertaken related to construction. And long-term viability of the project or something like that.
I agree.
Okay, I can say it, I can't type it, so Brian's gonna have to.
I'm gonna need you to start from all over again when you.
Go back to the Zoom recording and pull that out.
It was a stream of conscious statement.
If the commission was okay with that, we can type that in tomorrow if Brian doesn't have that.
Yeah, let's do that tomorrow.
I'm fine with that.
If we want to attempt that or?
No, please don't, please don't.
Twelve hours from now, you guys go.
Yeah, just put a little, just put a note, Brian, well, because if they're okay with the language I stated, we can just pull it off the recording tomorrow.
Um, and then, so I'll entertain an, an updated motion in a second.
Yeah.
Yes, since I made the first motion, I make the second motion to approve.
And I'll make the second second.
Okay. Can we do a roll call vote now? We ready, do you think?
I was just gonna bring up one thing and I apologize for, I'm not trying to prolong things, um, just because I think it's important. Considering the issues raised by deep, just to acknowledge, um, and that might be another fine chance, you might have to vote again. Um, just acknowledging that, you know, the, 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 and, and this, this would be my words, not yours. Dealing with the dry egress, um, issue and, and because that, that was brought up by deep and I, I think it's important to at least acknowledge that. We, we're, you know, A, we didn't increase any allowed density in the zone, but, uh, uh, you know, related to. Uh, what you guys think about adding the additional residential units in the flood zone, I, I think it's, at least should be discussed a little bit.
I mean, I'm totally okay adding it. We, there's a plan in place of flooding happening, we're not talking about. Flash flood situations like. This is safer than a single-family home in Royton when it comes to, uh. Flood considerations like. I'm sorry, Darius. You didn't, I couldn't hear what you said.
Evacuation.
Oh, evacuation? I would say it's just as in the same condition of, like, you, you get a lot of notice, you have notice, you have Water Street. You can go up it out if you get the notice ahead of time. And it's actually safer to stay in place for these folks.
And they have a, they have a plan, you know, to notify everybody. And see to it that they're notified, so there, if there's a, uh, an evacuation order. Everybody knows it and.
Yeah.
Has an opportunity to, to evacuate. I mean, you can't make people evacuate. People always just die that too, no matter. How dumb that is.
Exactly. You know, from a runoff perspective, this is exponentially better than what we have today. It's actually going to probably help decrease the flooding on Water Street. And frankly, if we had more of these developments around Norwalk in the state, maybe in the country, frankly, maybe we wouldn't be in this climate issue that we're in. But alas, there we are. So I really think this is a, a great project. You know, an acre on the water, people have been asking for that for in every water study or plan. Since I've been around, you know, past seven years. You know, it's not to dismiss the Water Street flooding issue, and it's still gonna, needs to be addressed, but I don't think that. Is a necessary condition for this to move forward.
Uh, can we vote on this and then come back to, um, Steve's concern?
Yep. Cause that one makes sense. Let's, let's do a roll call vote.
Right. See, uh, Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Shulman?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Williams?
Abstain.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
I believe that's all in favor and one abstention.
Now, Steve, how did you want us to acknowledge, uh, Deep's concern?
Um, so if you want to add a finding at the, I mean. Depends, so you voted yes, uh, so I think you can add a finding that, um, you want to work through some language quickly now, it shouldn't take too long.
Might as well.
Yeah, so it's not changing anything, conditions are changing the vote, adding a finding that you acknowledged, um. Yeah, now I lost my train of thought.
Well, we acknowledge Deep's concern regarding dry access.
Egress.
Or egress, pardon me.
And feel that's been mitigated by the applicant's. Uh. Proposals to handle flooding events or something like that.
Right. Actually, what do they call that? I have it right here somewhere. Their flood preparedness plan. That's been mitigated by the, uh, applicant's flood preparedness plan.
Along with.
Maybe.
Along with their proposal to install the backflow valve. I think that's another component worth highlighting here.
I think that's already in the conditions.
Sure, uh, yeah. I think it also makes sense as a, as a fact that, or a finding that they've. Gone beyond the planned generation to, um. Reduce, like materially reduce, uh, flooding or flood conditions on Water Street.
Yeah, probably good to vote on just including that into the resolution.
Can we do that with a show of hands? All of those of us who voted yes? Vote on it, including the resolution, all those in favor? Okay, it looks like everybody is for it. Okay. Great. Now, the last thing on our agenda is the discussion of the, uh. Accessory dwelling unit. Of course, it always comes up at the end when everybody's tired.
Yeah, and, and, and this can, this is going to be super quick because we don't have anything concrete. More than what we talked about previously, it's, it's on the top of the drawing board, it's just that there's a couple of other things that have not been able to get off the drawing board first. So we can move on to it. I know we had talked about, um, at least a discussion on, uh, owner occupancy. The need for a site plan for the detached units and the third issue that we were talking about, um, and we. Made a little progress, just haven't gotten to wrap it all up yet, is the idea of having, uh, pre-approved plans for ADUs. And that's a little more involved than the other two items, so it's definitely on the, something that we want to get to. Um, before the end of the calendar year, and I think you can move on some of that. Definitely before the end of the calendar year, just don't have concrete proposal on the, um, pre-approved plans yet.
You know, I'll add that there's a couple, two more things with, just to put it on your radar of like. Things for revisions to ADUs would also be potentially increasing the maximum size. That detached ones can be, um, and then also taking a, another look at the parking requirement. Um, again, these are things that, you know, some folks come in and they're immediately like, uh, an ADU on their properties immediately and feasible just based on some of the. Requirements that we have.
Right.
So just put that on your radar for you guys to start thinking about.
Okay. Okay, good. Uh, the next thing is the acceptance of minutes.
I'll move approval of the July sixteenth, uh, minutes.
Is there a second? Okay, second. All those in favor who attended that meeting? Anybody opposed? How about abstentions? One, two abstentions. Okay, uh, in the August twentieth meeting.
I'll move for approval.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, then, all those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? Okay, good. Okay, there, so the minutes are approved. Are there further comments of the director?
Uh, just a quick note, and, um, Amelia can jump in and correct me if I got anything wrong. We do have a special meeting scheduled for next Wednesday, which is the site walk out at two eighty-four New Canaan Ave, and I think it's at six o'clock. We'll get you more information by Monday of next week, very similar format to what we did up at the Silver Mine Tapper in a few months back. Uh, and I understand that, you know, Ms. Wells and Mr. Bachnick are not available at the set time, but we will work with them to. Set up a separate time for them to join us or, you know, out there and just do the same conversation that you had, that is a reminder.
When's the? I don't remember being not available.
Oh.
But when's the actual thing?
It's next Wednesday, September tenth at six P M at the site at two eighty-four New Canaan Avenue.
I will be unavailable.
If you are available, that's fantastic, that would be great.
I will be in attendance.
I gotta figure out why, why I thought I was unavailable. And it depends on if I can get a sitter, but I'm gonna go double check by email and figure out what I was thinking of, sorry about.
Bring the kids.
And that agenda is posted for the special meeting, just for anyone watching as well, if they wanted to access it.
On the, uh, seventeenth at noon.
Yeah, and that will, um, again, just a quick reminder, we'll, we'll let you. Put this in writing as well, there's, you know, the, the intent will just be staff showing you the site, here's the, um. Areas of concern, here's where the neighbors are located, here's the, you know, sensitive areas of the site. No real conversation, no discussion, the public is allowed to attend, cannot speak or ask questions as well, so just. Keep in mind there are very strict FOIA requirements on the site visits.
Okay, and also, it, you know, since I'm going on the seventeenth at noon, if anybody can't make the. Next Wednesday, that's the second opportunity, right?
Yeah, as long as we don't get a quorum, because then I have to notice that one, so we're trying to just do that, everybody on one night would be best, and then just do the. Hopefully, just Ms. Wells, but we'll do what we have to do.
Okay, I see, okay.
And then quick, Galen, just, I don't know if we have to do this tonight, but, um. Next meeting definitely the election committee for, uh. Uh, roles, we have to do that for our first October meeting renewed.
Yes, yeah. So next time we'll set up a, a committee to, uh. Propose a new director. Yes, you know.
A new executive.
Director and secretary. Okay, good. Definitely, we need to do that. And then we elect some, uh, the new group in October. Okay, good. Great. Well, I think we're down to adjournments. Does anyone have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move. Yep.
All those in favor? Okay, see you all soon.
Have a good night.
Good night.